Tampa Bay is like no place else.
Wait, you can't recycle the bag. You have to throw it away.
Proper recycling keeps it that way for everyone. Bags tangle in machinery and can bring sorting efforts to a halt.
No bags.
Trash the bags and keep our recycling program moving forward.
No, Mommy, no plastic bags.
Do your part to keep our recycling bag free. Trash the Tanglers or return them to participating retailers. For more information, visit TampaBayRecycles.org.
These are the jobs you may not see every day, but just know we're working hard to make Hillsborough County a better place to live, work, and play. Subscribe to our YouTube page for more great county-related videos only on HTV.
Psst, hey, would you do me a favor? Grab your phone or smart device and open up that camera. Then point it right here at the QR code. Do you have it? Oh, wait a second. When you see the link pop up on your screen, give it a tap. You ready? Boom! Welcome to the Hillsborough County official YouTube channel. We've got all sorts of videos here, all about what makes our community such an awesome place. From local events and community highlights to what's in the perfect Cuban sandwich. We've got it all. We're always adding new things, so while you're here, be sure to subscribe and hit that notification bell so you'll never miss a new video. Here's that QR code again, just in case you missed it. Go ahead and check it out. Ooh. This must have fallen out of that video. This really is the perfect Cuban sandwich.
Welcome to a meeting of your planning commission, the official local planning agency for the cities of Tampa, Temple Terrace, Planned City, and unincorporated Hillsborough County. The Planning Commission provides innovative leadership and long-range vision that contributes to the creation of a thriving, prosperous community that offers opportunity, fairness, and choice in how we live, move, learn, work, and play. For more information about the Planning Commission, please call 813-272-5940. Follow us on social media or visit our website at PlanHillsborough.org.
Welcome, everyone, to the February 24, 2025 public hearing of the Planning Commission on Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan Amendments. We thank you for attending this meeting. Your comments and participation are encouraged. For those attending in person and wishing to speak on any agenda item, please sign the register at the rear of the room and turn off any devices that may be a distraction. To minimize feedback in the audio, all online participants in the meeting will be muted until it is their opportunity to speak. Planning commissioners should unmute themselves to indicate that they would like to speak. Please be sure to state your name at the beginning of your remarks for the benefit of the clerk. There will be an opportunity for members of the public to provide comments. When your name is called, you will be unmuted when it is your turn to speak. Please wait until the chair calls on you to begin speaking. State your name at the beginning of your comments and adhere to the time limits. If anyone has difficulties or is watching via HTV and would like to provide comments to be included in the record for the local government hearing, please email them to Planner@PlanCom.org. For those who are not familiar with our process, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be introduced. Staff will give their presentation with a 15-minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a 15-minute time limit. Following presentations, members of the public may address the Planning Commission when recognized by the chairman. Public comment will be heard for three minutes per person. The applicant will be afforded a three-minute period for rebuttal response. Planning commissioners will then ask questions. Public comment will be closed. Then upon a motion, a second and discussion of vote will be taken. To all participants, please note that tonight's hearing concerns proposed changes to the comprehensive plan. Presentations should not include matters related to zoning applications and cite plans that are not before the commission. Zoning conditions are not relevant to plan amendments and may not be considered by the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission's purview and making a recommendation is limited to consistency or inconsistency with the comprehensive plan. And with that, I'd like to please ask the clerk to go ahead and call roll.
Good evening, Commissioners. Bowden?
Yeah.
Buzza? Cardenas? Kona? Kress? Linkus?
Here.
Lauk?
Here.
Saria? Seben? Barry? Orton? Joseph?
Here.
Thank you, you have come.
All right, with that, I would like to probably kick it back over to the clerk here. We have a new planning commissioner newly appointed with us from Temple Terrace, Evangeline Linkus, and we will have her take the oath of office administered by the clerk.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Evangeline Linkus.
A planning commission appointee of the city of Temple Terrace.
A planning commission appointee of the city of Temple Terrace.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of my appointed office.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of my appointed office.
In a fair, equitable, ethical, and dignified manner.
In a fair, equitable, ethical, and dignified manner.
And in compliance with all applicable laws of the state of Florida.
And in compliance with all applicable laws of the state of Florida.
Hillsborough County or city as applicable.
Hillsborough County or city as applicable.
And the practices and procedures established by the Planning Commission.
And the practices and procedures established by the Planning Commission.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, did you want to say anything or?
Happy to be serving again, happy to be appointed by the city of Temple Terrace, and it's always a pleasure to work with the Planning Commission, so thank you.
All right, glad to have you back. All right, so we will move on to our business items for tonight. Not keep everybody in suspense. Action item 2A we will start with, HCCPA. I guess we're going to do them two at a time, you said, so A and B. We're going to do 2A and 2B. HCCPA 24-44 Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment, Wyoma Village Residential 2, Urban Service Area Boundary Expansion, and HCCPA 24-45, the Comprehensive Plan MAP Amendment to match the text amendment, Wyoma Village Residential 2. And the presenter is Sofia Garantiva.
Can everyone hear me? Well, good evening, Commissioners. Sofia Garantiva, Planning Commission staff, presenting on the Comprehensive Plan Amendments associated with the urban service area expansion. So before I start presenting on the amendments, I just wanted to provide a refresher on how and why the expansion was initiated. So population projections show that the county would grow by over 530,000 people by 2050. And based on Planning Commission data, there is not enough vacant, developable land that exists within the current urban service area to accommodate this growth. So there are several strategies that exist to address growth in the county and are being explored, including the strategic expansion of the urban service area boundary, which is why we're here today. So back in November of 2023, the Board of County Commissioners requested staff to identify areas to potentially expand the urban service area. Staff reported back to the board in March of 2024 and identified four areas as shown on the map. Lands with a Wyoma Village Residential 2, or WVR2, future land use designation, as shown in orange. Lands with a Residential Plan 2, or RP2, future land use designation, as shown in green. Areas along I-4, the I-4 corridor, which are shown in purple, and areas within Little Manatee South, shown in yellow. So the board then gave direction to move forward with the expansion of the urban service area boundary in Wyoma and Baum River View areas, and they're considered Phase 1. And this is the subject of the text amendments tonight. They also called for additional study of Little Manatee South and the I-4 corridor, which is considered Phase 2 and will be initiated later on this year. The board also gave further direction to change the future land uses of Phase 1, the Phase 1 areas, to a maximum of Residential 4, which is the subject of the MAP amendments tonight. I also wanted to note that throughout the process, the overall process, we have been coordinating with multiple county departments and agencies on various subjects, including public engagement. So again, to help educate and inform the public of these changes, proposed changes, Planning Commission staff developed a robust public engagement program that included a website dedicated to the proposed expansion. The project website provides an overview of the project, answers frequently asked questions, such as what the expansion may mean to the properties in the proposed expansion areas, and the community impacts. Residents can learn about public meetings, find out if their property is in the proposed expansion area through a locator tool. They can review the project documents, maps, data, and provide public comment. We also had an online survey that was available from October 2024 through January 2025, which received 243 responses. We also had in-person open houses that were held in November of 2024 and January of 2025 at Sumner High School, which residents were informed of via mail notice, sign postings, email, local news outlets, and social media. County staff from Community Infrastructure Planning, Public Works, Water Resources, Conservation, and Environmental Lands Management in Hillsborough County Schools, Growth Management, and Planning Department attended the open houses, or the open house, in January to answer questions from the public on infrastructure. Planning Commission staff has also worked with the county communications team to bring awareness to the project. And I do want to just say before we continue that this is, again, because there are two presentations. It is a little bit lengthy, but I do want to make sure that we cover all of our bases. So with that, I'll go ahead and move into the text and map amendments, starting with HCCPA 24-44. So this is a publicly initiated text amendment, again, proposing expansion of the urban service area by approximately 4,208 acres. The acreage is exclusive of any privately initiated amendments. I did want to note that there, that some small adjustments to this acreage have been identified and will be presented to the Board of County Commissioners in March. The adjustments are to include just slivers of parcels that were cut out during the GIS process, the mapping program. So we will again go before the Board of County Commissioners with an updated acreage. But the proposed boundary line is accurately depicted, and you will see that on the following slides. So this aerial shows the expansion area generally associated with HCCPA 24-44, as shaded in red. The red dash line shows the proposed urban service area boundary. Again, this is the, this line, as it's depicted, is accurate. As mentioned before, we did work with several county departments and agencies throughout this process, and the following departments and agencies provided comments on the amendment. Conservation and Environmental Land Management and the Environmental Protection Commission, Hillsborough County School District provided comments regarding current and future capacity. Affordable Housing also provided comments, which were in support of the potential for more housing opportunities. Transportation Planning Organization, which provided a regional modeling analysis, included that as part of their comments. Public Utilities, including water resources, as well as community infrastructure planning, fire rescue, agribusiness, and development services. No objections were received. And before providing the consistency we're refining, just wanted to note that the proposed urban service area expansion was initiated while unincorporated Hillsborough County updated its future land use section. As of December of 2024, a new future land use is effective, and it was determined that the newly adopted future land use be used in review of these amendments. So the proposed amendment is consistent with the following objectives and policies of the Comprehensive Plan, specifically future land use policies relating to concentrating growth in the urban service area and policies for expansion of the urban service area boundary. Also, goals and strategies in the Wyoma Community Plan and South Shore Area-Wide Systems Plan related to encouraging a mix of housing opportunities, pursuing economic development opportunities, and managing and protecting environmental resources. As such, Planning Commission staff recommends that the proposed text amendment, HCCPA 24-44, be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. I will go ahead and just move on to the MAP amendment, HCCPA 24-45 for Wyoma Village Residential 2. Again, this is a publicly initiated MAP amendment that is accompanying the text amendment to expand the urban service area boundary and consists of approximately 5,661 acres. The area would be going from Wyoma Village Residential 2, WVR2, to Residential 4, RES4, Residential 1, RES1, and Natural Preservation. These amendments are generally located in southeast Hillsborough County, south of County Road 672, east of US Highway 301, north of the Hillsborough County boundary line, and west of County Road 39. The lands are located in the rural area and are in the Wyoma Community Plan, as well as the South Shore Area-Wide Systems Plan. And this aerial shows the general area. You can see the proposed expansion area outlined in a red dash line. And the lands part of HCCPA 24-44 are shown in blue shading. They have a WVR2 future land use. And a black dotted line shows the lands that are part of this amendment. Areas that are not shaded are either part of the privately initiated amendments in the area, or they're the areas associated with the RP2 expansion. So the following map shows the adopted future land use in the area. Again, WVR2 is shown in blue. And this map shows the proposed future land uses of Residential 4, Residential 1, and Natural Preservation. As you can see, the majority of the lands, approximately 4,200 acres, is proposed to be Residential 4 in that light orangey color. Approximately 1,447 acres are proposed Natural Preservation, and that's in the light teal color. These lands are mostly ELAP lands that are owned by the county. And ELAP, for those that are not familiar, stands for Environmental Lands Acquisition and Protection Program. The one acre that is proposed, there's one acre that is proposed Residential 1, and this is to accommodate a parcel with a single-family home that is surrounded by ELAP lands. Natural Preservation and, the Natural Preservation lands and the Residential 1 parcel will remain outside of the proposed urban service area boundary. In black hatching, as you can see on the map, these show the privately initiated amendments. These lands are not included, again, as part of these, this request or these applications. So if approved, the proposed amendments would increase residential density potential. The proposed amendments would also reduce overall non-residential development potential, but it would be removing some restrictions on the location of non-residential uses specific to the WVR2 future land use. The amendment would also support environmental conservation efforts, specifically for those county-owned ELAP lands. A more detailed impact breakdown is available in the staff report. We also wanted to note, again, that these amendments are just the first step in preparing future services and infrastructure needs, providing the potential impacts of the proposed density and intensity. During the rezoning or subdivision process, a more precise assessment of a development impact is determined. The owner of any of the properties that are being changed or proposed to be changed by this process would still need to rezone the property to utilize any of that additional density or intensity. And these are just photos of the subject area and around the subject area. This is a view of County Road 579 and Saffold Road, the southernmost point of the proposed USA expansion. This is Westlake Drive, just north of Bishop Road, looking north into the existing urban service area. Residential 6 is to the left, Residential 4 is to the right. It's just an example of some of the existing development pattern in the area. This is a photo of the Tico Utility Easement to the left and the Wyoma Solar Farm to the right. The easement runs through the WVR2 lands as well as the RP2 lands. Depending on where, some of the areas are proposed to be Residential 4. Some are proposed to be Natural Preservation. The Wyoma Solar area is proposed to be Residential 4. Again, the same departments and agencies reviewed and commented on the proposed MAP amendment as they did on the text and had similar comments, except for the Transportation Planning Organization. The comments were, provided were exclusive of the text amendment modeling that was provided in that amendment. No objections were received. And again, just wanted to note that the newly adopted future land use section was used in the review of this amendment. And the proposed amendment, again, is consistent with the following objectives and policies of the Comprehensive Plan, specifically the future land use policies relating to concentrating growth in the urban service area, balancing character, compatibility, and location of land uses, the purpose and the intent of planned villages. Also consistent with the goals and strategies in the community, in the Wyoma Community Plan and the South Shore Area-Wide Systems Plan related to encouraging housing opportunities, pursuing economic development opportunities, and balancing natural resources. As such, Planning Commission staff recommends that the proposed MAP amendment, HCCPA 24-45, be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. That concludes my presentation on these two items, and staff is available for any questions.
I believe Ms. Sornita has a statement to make before we go to public comment.
Yeah, just before we turn to the public comment, I just wanted to mention that while these two items, we presented them together because they are covering the same geography. The text amendment and the MAP amendment kind of go hand in hand, and the decisions are, to some degree, linked. And we would recommend taking the public comment together. On these items, the Planning Commission should take separate actions on each of the PLAN amendments individually. So just wanted to make that clear for the record.
All right, all right. So we will go to our public comment now. And we will start online, I guess. So I will start off with Matthew Rosales. Is Matthew Rosales on the line?
Mr. Chair, Matthew did not check in.
All right, what about Mary Minier? Minier?
Yes, I did check in. Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Please, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, I live at 3131 Marine Grass Drive in Wyoma and am a volunteer at the WCPAC. Our group has spoken many times at these meetings, asking at the very least for a pause on the development. We've been outvoting at each meeting. One thing that hasn't come up, though, is the actual cost of living in Hillsborough County. As of today, according to Zillow, there are 4,700 single-family homes for sale, 1,700 homes for rent, and 1,300 apartments for rent in the county. And there are probably more that are privately listed. The average day listing in January for home sales is 59 days, up 10% from a year ago. In January, 1,100 homes were sold, which is a 10% decrease from a year ago. And the median price is also going down. As a resident of Berry Bay, I have firsthand knowledge of the building that's going on and the now vacant new homes. The builders build the home and sell the home, thus making their quotas. Now comes the reality for many of the new homeowners. For whatever reason, many were not given an accurate amount of property taxes they'll have to pay. The first partial year is just the land and the CDD. The full year now includes the home and any exemptions if applicable. What they are seeing is a 100% increase in the property portion of their tax bill. This could be anywhere from $4,000 to $8,000. As a result, they're trying to sell or rent and move, leaving their new home vacant. Some have tried to find second jobs, while others are spreading the increase over. Some have tried to find second jobs, while others are spreading the increase over 18 months, none of which is a permanent solution. In my small neighborhood here, of the 154 homes, there are about 10% that were previously sold and are now vacant for sale or rent. If the current trends continue, we will be a new home desert, and those that are staying will not see any marked increase in the value of their homes because of the excess quantity. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Melanie Isaakson?
Isaakson.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
I live in Valencia del Sol, and I'm also a part of the WC-PCA group. And one of the areas that I have noticed and been concerned with is the lack of real planning as far as the infrastructure for a lot of the housing development that is going on. I have a background in development as far as small business development and economic development in my past life up north. And one of the things that I'm very concerned about, especially with the neighborhood I'm living in, is with the development of roads that will carry the traffic onto 301. It doesn't seem to be, the developer does not seem to be thinking of a true and concise way of getting the traffic from the outlined areas to 301 or to 674. With that said, there's also a concern I have for flooding or what is happening on the hydraulic, the hydrologist report as far as where the water is going, because it does seem to be a problem as far as long-term with all the housing going in. Is someone really planning and looking at the water flow and where the water is actually going? Along with that, I am concerned about overdevelopment. I have seen overdevelopment in other areas where you build a lot of houses, it looks good, and then all of a sudden the housing market collapses because you have overbuilt and you have a depression, so to speak, for those homeowners who are currently living there and are unable to sell for whatever reason. And new homeowners are not willing to move into that area because of what is viewed as a depression or homes that no one wants to move into. This lowers the value of the homes, and it decreases the taxes providing, that will be ultimately provided to Hillsborough County. So it needs to be thought of on a longer-term basis. If you're relying just on housing to get you out of a housing shortage, you need to look at it from the standpoint of housing and commercial development. And that needs to be, go hand in hand as far as solving some of the problem. And I think buildings, building jobs, small jobs, little, little, I don't want to say strip malls, I'm not a big fan of strip malls, but any type of economic development along some of the big roads would also help, but as well as some of the housing needs to be considered for just adding to the value, but not as much as what we're looking at right now. If we do it, the infrastructure has to be included, because that's the only way to make the development look attractive and bring in people. But until then, I don't see it happening in a coordinated way that is going to add value to everybody's community. It's going to be a boondoggle.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Now we will go to our in-person speakers, and we will start off with John Regan or Regan?
My name is John Regan. I live in Wyomama and a member of the Wyomama Community Plan Advisory Council, also known as the Wyomama CPAC, an all-volunteer organization. Our organization would like to partner with the Planning Commission, if at all possible, to help provide community input into the planning of the Wyomama Urban Service Area Extension. The Wyomama CPAC meets with and represents the Wyomama community. Our intentions are not to stop new development, but instead ensure the Wyomama community is not negatively impacted by the new development. The urban service area extension of Wyomama involves converting WVR2 to either RES4, RES1, or RES Natural Preservation, which is not consistent with the 2021-approved Wyomama Village Comprehensive Plan. If the WVR2 community benefits can be conveyed to RES4, then we can support this, but that would be a recommendation I would ask from you. We need for the Wyomama community to be able to negotiate with the developer for community benefits. Therefore, we are asking for WVR2 current community benefits be migrated under the RES4 and require the developer to meet and negotiate with the community for these benefits. In addition, the urban service area extension should require comprehensive infrastructure studies initiated now to account for growth and more housing densities. These studies, we request you recommend be initiated include a flooding and stormwater drainage study. Environmental changes have occurred since the last flood zones were defined. Hurricane Debbie and Helen caused flooding due to the Manatee River and Althea watershed exceeding flood levels. This hampered housing area drainage and caused housing area water to back up and flood. We also need a road study. Roads in Wyomama and surrounding areas are already congested, and we can't make it any worse. There needs to be a school study. Current school capacity is at approximately 125%, and new development will increase the need for more schools. There needs to be a safety study. New development will increase the need for the appropriate fire, police, and EMT response time. The Wyomama CPAC goal is to identify and find solutions for additional infrastructure improvements and negotiate community benefits so that we can support the development of new housing versus
Thank you, sir.
opposing development.
All right. Next up, we have Augie Grace.
Good evening. My name is Augie Grace. I live at 15821 Cobble Mill Drive in Wyomama. I am also a member of the Wyomama Community Plan Advisory Council. I am requesting that the Planning Commission reject CPA 2444 and CPA 2445 and determine them to be inconsistent with the current Wyomama Village Community Plan, or as an alternative to table these two amendments. In the past six months, this Planning Commission and the Hillsborough Board of County Commissioners have adopted four privately-initiated Comprehensive Plan amendments. These amendments have been for 2,000 acres, which will lead to approximately 8,400 new housing units, bringing to Wyomama approximately 11,000 additional children, and at two cars per household, bringing in an additional 16,000 new cars in the Wyomama area. This is in addition to all the recent growth in Wyomama and the number of houses that are presently being built. Now, the Planning Commission staff is proposing expanding the urban service area, and this proposal is for 5,661 acres, which will lead to approximately 16,000 housing units. While there were no objections in the department's reports, the school department specifically said this is going to be a dramatic increase of students. We are asking the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners to pause further construction. We've done this in the last couple of months. We've had a petition that was signed by 1,800 residents. We are requesting support for a comprehensive infrastructure study to include flooding, stormwater management, traffic mitigation, and public safety. The Planning Commission staff will say that these services will be available once you convert this to an urban service area, but we all know that that won't happen for years after the residential units are built. We ask your help to help us study these concerns and help plan mitigation measures during and before the residential units are built. So please reject these two amendments, or as an alternative, table these amendments and join us for calling for a comprehensive infrastructure study. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Kami Corbett.
Good evening. Kami Corbett with the Law Firm of Hillward and Henderson. First, I want to thank all of you for your service. It's been a busy couple of months for you, and you've been here in this room a lot and late at night, and I do appreciate your service. This is an important step in the county's long-range planning goals. I think I've told you before, I've been here since 2007, and in that timeframe, I don't know how many times there's been a study or a recommendation that we have to plan for future growth, and each time, everyone decides it's just, it's premature. And it was supposed to be premature in 2007, and all of the same arguments were made, that there's too many, too many houses, too many empty houses, we're not planning for things. And all those same arguments can be made to scare off all of you from making a very important public policy decision that's been a long time coming, so I encourage you to make it and follow your Planning Commission staff this evening. One thing is important about all the agency comments, all of them do talk about they need to, this means if this goes through, they all have to start planning for this to occur, the school system, utility system. And this gives them the ability, now that this area is in, would be in the urban service boundary, to actually spend public dollars on those studies and on those improvements. So this will actually enable that to occur, when if they, if they stay rural, that won't occur. These areas will remain entitled for two units of the acre, and they won't get any public money for roads, or utilities, or waters, or anything. It would all have to come from development. And so therefore, I think that this is a net positive to the area, and I appreciate your time this evening, and respectfully request you follow your staff.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Zelvis Aplin.
My name is Zelvis Aplin. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for my time and all the other members of the council. We are excited about what is happening in Wyomama in terms of growth and development. For a long time, we have said that Wyomama has been the forgotten part of Hillsborough County, and we are glad that there is attention coming out to our area. However, I'm a little concerned, not only as a resident in Wyomama, but also as a pastor in the heart of Wyomama, who loves and cares deeply for this community. Let me first start off by saying, with the numbers, 11,000 children, I mean, I'm just excited about what that means. There's more people for us to love and serve in our area, and we are excited about the opportunity to love these people. However, I would be remiss by saying that I'm not concerned about capacity issues in our area. And these are the things that I feel like many of our residents have voiced their concern. I think there, there needs to be a comprehensive plan and the opportunity for us to service all the growth that is coming into Hillsborough County. However, if you take a look at the capacity of the schools currently, Wyomama Elementary, their school capacity is 974 kids. Reddick Elementary is 794 kids. Morgan High School, they're anticipating by the time they get kind of populated, it'll be around about 3,000 students that will be there. They're going to put a middle school there on the same grounds as Morgan High School. Right now, Shields Middle School has 1,867 students in their population. If you add a future elementary school and you build it bigger than Wyomama and Reddick Elementary, you're looking at about probably somewhere around 900, 1,000 kids. Well, when we talk about the number of children, that does not even get anywhere close to addressing the issues that we're going to have from a school resourcing problem. And so when Hillsborough County Public School Systems had their meeting over at Wyomama Elementary School not too long ago, I brought this up, and I said, hey, guys, we're concerned about the growth and y'all's ability to, to service the growth. And they said, well, we had a great plan at Sumner High School. I said, how'd that work out for you? It didn't. And so then I said, okay, well, let's talk about Morgan High School. And they said, well, we, we finally learned what we needed to learn from Morgan. I said, no, you haven't, because there's more development coming quicker than what we saw with Sumner High School, and they're just not, honestly, they're not prepared for what they don't think is going to happen. So in terms of the infrastructure issues, 674 and Westlake, that intersection right there, I can see that being a potential death trap for children trying to cross the road to get to school that are walking to school. And so I would just ask that we had addressed those concerns. And then also, there is a, there's a light right there at Lagoon Shore Boulevard in 674 that just got put in, probably about a few months ago, that is working well for us, for our community, but yet the traffic is still back. So I think there's a lot of infrastructure issues that we still need to address and figure out how to come up with a comprehensive plan before we start adopting all of these amendments and we have residents in our community that we cannot service. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have, we'll go with Buddy Harwell?
Good evening. Buddy Harwell, first time being here, won't be the last. You're going to get tired of seeing this like the VOCC is. First of all, I want to comment, object to the putting the two things in one. Y'all get to vote on it twice, but we only get to talk on it once, so you limited us to three minutes, taken away three minutes, and I've already wasted 20. So therefore, I'm a long-life resident here, 60 years, hopefully in May. My dad came down here from Georgia in his 30s, graduated from Plant City High School in 1939. So I don't, there's not multi-generations, you know, like some of the other people talk about, but I consider myself, you know, care about the area, grew up in Gibsonton. By the way, I'm vice president at the Baum Civic Association, the president of the Concerned Citizens of Gibsonton. Like I say, where I grew up, where my dad had a business, we moved out to Baum in '03 to try to get away from the growth, and guess what? It's following us out there and knocking us down the road. So, you know, we say we have to do it, we have to do it, 300,000, 500,000 people are coming. Why? The old, the old saying is, if we build it, they will come. Well, let's not build it. Let them go somewhere else. You haven't fixed the infrastructure in the last 30 years inside the urban service area. So there's stuff that, if you let us expand, we can now use the money to, to, to fix it out there. We don't believe it. And with, there's enough attorneys in this building, they could have figured out a way around that loophole to fix the infrastructure out there, even in the rural area where the development was. We talked about the RP2 plan that was initiated back in the 80s. You know, we did a Baum community plan in '07, but RP2 trumped it. Our community plan wasn't worth it. We should write it on a roll of toilet paper, because that's all it's worth. So now, all of a sudden, this used, was inconsistent, but we made up a new policy or something, now makes it consistent. Why didn't that work for RP2 and our community plan? It's just a lot of bureaucratic BS that we keep hearing, oh, time after time after time. And I know one of the reasons why y'all limited us, because y'all want to go home. Well, guess what? We want to go home too, and we drove from South County all the way up here so we can express our concerns. So find this inconsistent. Let's, let's sit down and talk about it. We had a three-year moratorium I was part of, that all parties, for three years, discussed this, came away with a solution. Nobody came away happy or victorious, so I think the plan worked. And now you just want to, there again, we should have wrote it, wrote it on toilet paper. You just, and how many thousands or hundreds of thousands of dollars did we spend on that Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Next up, we have J. Frank F., JF.
Good evening. Jamie Franklin. My late wife and I, in '85, bought a place in Baum. Beautiful. Out in the country? Forget that. It's ruined now. I've sold, and I'm moving out to another part of Hillsborough County. I'm very sad to say this, but one thing, there would be a lot more people here tonight if this meeting was in South County. We have a lot of elderly residents, can't drive, not going to try to park, and all the rest of us. Would love to be here tonight and talk to you folks. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Next up, we have Bill O'Brien.
Good evening. My name is Bill O'Brien. I live in Wyomama. I actually live in Baum. I've been a resident of the area all of my life. I've worked with Hillsborough County, the Planning Commission, and other departments within the county for the last 40-some-odd years, trying to improve and build a better South County, a better Hillsborough County. And quite frankly, it's been an uphill battle. It's been difficult. It's been difficult. I worked recently on the developments, the changes, the amendments to the comprehensive plan on a planning advisory committee, and within the plan, there are goals, objectives, and policies that I believe this commission needs to follow closely and read closely and understand in depth before you approve these amendments. There's a lot about compatibility, and mass urban development is not compatible with an urban, with a rural environment like Baum, Baum and Wy Mama, and it's not compatible. The objective of the plan, a lot of, many sections within the plan, is to plan ahead and prepare for the future. Well, there hasn't been any planning ahead. There is no preparation for the future in South County, and I'm urging you to vote against these amendments. At least deter or defer them to a time after comprehensive studies have been conducted to determine, is the area ready for development? And the answer is, no, it's not. There is not adequate infrastructure in place, such as transportation. There is not adequate infrastructure in place, such as water, sewer, and, and other things. There are not adequate support services in place, public support services in place, to support the people who already live there. So, the area is not ready to, to embrace this expansion. We're not against growth. We're against unplanned, bad, poor planning, and terrible, you know, growth that's occurred in Hillsborough County. And if you don't understand what I'm saying, take a look within your existing urban service area. You have approximately 70,000 acres within the urban service area now that is developable or redevelopable. I'm pleading that you look into those regions and those areas and expand your urban service area within those areas, and quit expanding before you plan ahead and prepare for the future. Thank you. Have a good day. It's premature. I urge you to vote no.
Thank you. And I think that's all we had sign up in the public comment, so I will turn it back over to staff for response, three-minute response.
Jay Collins, Planning Commission staff. Just a few things out of that. It took me down memory lane. So, in 2020, we actually updated Wy Mama's community plan, and those were some of the same conversations that we had at that time with the community of Wy Mama, talking about infrastructure, talking about growth and compatibility in their community. And we went a long way to have some of those conversations, and that plan still exists. Part of what they're talking about with the community benefit option, the reason that was actually introduced, we can go down memory lane with it, but let's talk about it in the, in its current context and what happens in the future. Specifically, the community benefit options provide certain types of infrastructure that you do not get in the rural area today. When you move into the urban service area, some of those community benefits are actually things that are provided for, and when we start talking about having, whether they are trail connections, bicycle lanes, the availability to try to get transit, the availability of affordable housing. Again, in the rural service area, you cannot use an affordable housing density bonus, you can do so in the urban service area. So, that was part of that issue that we had with the community benefit option, was to look at urban services in the rural area, because this community was asking for it in 2020. They were asking for urban services. So, here is something that we have now to actually move the urban service boundary, which will introduce some of those services into this community. And also, the next step that they're asking for about infrastructure is that planning of infrastructure. And they are right to say that what happens with the planning of infrastructure is twofold. One, there are those plans that we look at, such as corridor preservation for the county, or for classification of roadways, for actually how you're going to build that roadway in the future. But then, the nuts and bolts of it get down to what you actually have when you go through a rezoning or for a subdivision plat, to where you actually then have an idea of what the impacts on the roadway are, what the impacts are to the school, what the impacts may be to fire and safety for whether or not you need to build another fire station in five years or in 10 years for a community. So, those are just some of the back and forth that we've been having with this community since 2020 on some of their concerns, which again, are valid concerns, but they are not new concerns. These are some of the same conversations that we've been having with them for quite some time now.
Thank you. All right. Yeah, Ms. Orne.
If I could, I would just add that, based on the board's direction, and then discussions with the county departments, we did outline that, with the, the county departments in a memo to the Board of County Commissioners, that this process needed to occur first to understand ultimately the scope of what the Board of County Commissioners would adopt in terms of the urban service area change and the land use change, because if they don't adopt the entirety of the, the property into the urban service area, or let's say they, they don't amend all of the, they don't change it all to residential four, they leave some of it residential two, all of that changes the, the potential infrastructure planning and the, the way that we might need to change the community plans, some of the ordinances. There, there's a whole host of documents that need to be conformed to, and plans that need to be conformed to the fact that now, potentially, all of this is in the urban service area. Jay mentioned a few of them, corridor preservation plans, the community plans, but there's a fairly long list of things that need to be updated to reflect a, a new urban service area, new population projections, new, and, and all of, but, but until we know what the area is, the extent of the area is, and, for example, there's an entire section of the land development code for the Wy Mama Village Residential Two land use category. That, if all of that land use category goes away because of these actions and the action the board adopts, then perhaps that section of the land development code just is deleted. But if some of it is retained, then we need to keep it. So, so we don't know what changes need to be made until we know what action the board ultimately adopts. So, that's sort of the process that we're in, is that this is the first step, and then there's gonna be a lot of subsequent steps that need to happen.
Thank you. All right. Before I turn it over to the commissioners for questions and discussions, I wanted to clarify one thing when I was reading through the paperwork like I do like a madman every weekend before these. I want to be clear that the Board of County Commissioners directed Planning Commission staff to bring forward an amendment to expand the urban service area. They didn't ask county staff to look at whether or not to expand it. They made a directive to bring forward an expansion. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, this is kind of different, and I noted it in the way we kind of set this, the meeting runs, there's no, so typically, there's an applicant who works for the owner, the owner's the applicant, there's an agent, and then staff does the review, third-party review, makes a determination that's our recommendation. This time, staff was told, basically, to bring something approvable forward, so this board basically is the first kind of, which, I mean, I know staff looks at things objectively in the background, but if staff were to say no to this and find it inconsistent, that kind of puts staff in a bind with the highest, most powerful elected officials in our county, does it not?
Well, I mean, I think...
Hold on, hold on.
Well, I think...
It's our turn. Let's, let's be respectful.
The, I mean, the board made, gave that direction based on the report that staff made in March with the recommendation that these areas be considered for expansion to the urban service area, and, and certainly, we would not have made a recommendation for an area that we felt was inconsistent with the comprehensive plan.
Right. Okay. And I just, I, I bring that point up, because this board, the, whatever action we take here, you know, we're not, our hands aren't bound in the way that, the Board of County Commissioners didn't direct us to do anything as Planning Commissioners. Okay? We have the freedom, right, to look at the comp plan and find things consistent or inconsistent. We weren't asked to vote, told to vote in any sort of way. So, I want all of you to realize that, you know, typically, in a typical situation, again, staff is kind of objective, and I'm not saying staff wasn't objective. Of course, staff always does their best to make sure they're objective and things aren't crazy, but you, you see what I'm saying here, they were directed to bring forward an expansion. So, if anyone has a problem with expansion, that voice is gonna come from here, it's not gonna come from anywhere else. Right? So, that's, that's kind of the point I want to make here before we get into that. And I have a lot more points to make as we get down into the weeds of all this, but I just wanted to clarify that for all of us in at this stage tonight before we take our actions. So, I'll, I'll turn it over to any of the commissioners who might have questions or comments. Y'all just look like you want me to keep going on for a second here. I don't see any lights on. I did, I guess, I'll start with, with mine then. I, I, you know, I have trouble with this. First, I'll, you know, I'll, I'll put it to the plan, policy or objective 1.1.9 that lists the criteria that we use to find this consistent, right, the seven criteria. I can agree with staff on the first three criteria, that there is developable land, that they are continuing the pattern, and I forgot what the other one is, but the last four criteria, I don't think we meet with what I've read through in this packet. And to me, you know, not hitting those last four of the seven criteria is grounds to find this thing inconsistent. You know what I mean? So, I, I have a little trouble, especially when I look at the environmental one. One of the criteria is environmental, and staff's response to how we met that criteria was that we moved what was ELAP land into natural preservation. So, we just basically changed the name of the category, and somehow, that is demonstration that there's not gonna be negative environmental impacts of doubling the intensity in South County, where there's no infrastructure right now. To me, that's, that's a very flimsy justification. The overall seven seems a very flimsy justification, but, you know, like I said, those, those last four to me, and I, I can go into more particulars on them, those last four criterias of policy 1.1.9, I, I don't think, you know, I, I get what staff found, but I disagree with staff, and I think those last four, you know, to me, weren't really met. And so, I, I find trouble finding consistency with our county's comprehensive plan. And overall, when I was reading through the report, I want to, staff did a great job on the report, there's a lot of information, there's a lot of outreach to the community. Within, within our bubble of planning, right, I think you all did very well as planners, Ms. Garantiva, everybody involved, I saw Bryn, Ms. Dauphine's name in there, Ms. Becker's name in there, I read through all the comments from all the citizens, I saw former, former planning commissioners making comments about what they wanted to see and what they didn't want to see. So, there was a lot of discussion from our planning agency, from our planning staff, from the community. What I didn't see in this report is a lot of discussion and leadership from the county, and that's not my purview. I'm not an elected county official, but as a professional who's worked in development for years and has a lot of knowledge of development, I found it appalling that county departments weren't speaking up on certain things. The Water Department did very well, schools did very well, Hillsborough County Fire Rescue did not do very well. We asked them, "How many fire stations do we think we need down there?" Their answer was, "We don't know." Right? They know they need fire stations for every 18,000 citizens. We gave them a projection, a population projection, and they couldn't do the basic math to give us a projection of how many firehouses they need in South County. This is glaring to me when public agencies aren't able to do basic math and figure these sorts of things out. Right? If we make this change, and something goes wrong, and the county isn't able to live up to what they say they're able to live up to, we have a lot of citizens out there that were leaving on the line, and it makes me very nervous. You know what I mean? I was one of the ones, and let me not, you know, when the private amendments came through, I was okay with the private amendments, and I'm still even now more okay with the private amendments, because I think that smaller scale is easier for those people to handle. You know, when we make this big sort of move like this, it's kind of like everybody's been talking about all night here, where, where's the, you know, the, the flooding infrastructure gonna come from? Where's the, in this report, there's not even discussion of sheriff and safety. Basic things like that are missing, and that's a huge red flag to me. If you've done development, you know that these things are very important, and I'm not asking to have these things figured out. Now, I get it, there's a chicken and an egg and all these terms we use, but when those basic things aren't even being discussed, and aren't even being talked about in the report, you know, it's a huge red flag to me, and I don't, you know, I'm gonna listen to what the rest of my commissioners have to say tonight, but I find it very hard to put support behind this. It seems to me that the county needs to do some more work, county departments need to stand up and say a little bit more, and we need a lot more information about where this, where's the money gonna come from, when's the money gonna get there, and what's gonna happen in the interim to the people who live there. There's, there's a huge gap in this report when it comes to that. So, those are just my early thoughts, and I, again, I'll listen to everything everybody has to say, but I just kind of wanted to put that out there. There, yes, Commissioner Kress.
Thanks for, for all of that. Yeah, I'm not convinced that the public won't be on the hook for all the additional infrastructure, and I've, I've never liked that. And then, also, I, I feel like, because the, just because the area is still rural doesn't mean there's been a lack of planning. I think the planning has been to keep the area rural. So, to me, that doesn't really correlate where you say there hasn't been planning, because I think it's okay to have some rural areas. As I travel around, mostly in the city of Tampa, there is, there's just a lot of available land for housing, for commercial, for what have you. So, I'm, I hate, I hate to go against staff, I do agree that the county commission told staff to find areas. I don't know whether staff would have otherwise, so I just, I'm not convinced that it's needed.
Thank you, Commissioner Kress. Yes, Commissioner Lucas.
I, I have a couple of questions, and I'll start with maybe the easiest one, it might be for Attorney Robin. If, I wondered if there is a process where if folks would like to have their additional three minutes, since we are looking at two different issues, if we could accommodate That was an issue that was raised, so I would like to respect that if, if we could.
Well, that's really, you know, up to the board from that standpoint. These two amendments are very interrelated, and that, which was the reason for combining them together, because the comments for the one seemed applicable to the comments for the other, because the, they are so connected. So, that, that's really a decision for the board, if the board wanted to open it back up for additional comment. There's, there's nothing defective about the process that's been, the, the way the process is being conducted, in my opinion.
Okay. I, I appreciate that, and I, I guess I, I would suggest, and I'm, I'm rusty at this, I'm not sure if I need to make a motion, but I would suggest that if, if someone did want to have an addition, if they had prepared comments of, of an additional three minutes, that we do allow that if, if the board has, would be interested in supporting that.
There's a motion. Is there a second to the commissioner's motion? Is there anybody interested in having? All right. We got a second to that motion. All right. So, the motion is to reopen the public comment to people who, did the clerk have, are you waiting for us to get that? Okay. The motion is to reopen the public comment so that individuals who do want to speak for another three minutes do get another three minutes, and they might have any questions or comments before we...
I have a comment. I'm going to vote for this, but I would encourage anyone who comes back to the podium to have new information, please. I want to respect your time. I realize it was a long drive out here. I am interested in, in what you have to say from a feedback perspective, but if you're gonna come back to the podium and you had other issues that you wanted to go through, or bullets that you feel are pertinent to the issue at hand, please come back up, but if not, please respect everyone's time.
All right. I guess, well, before we take the vote too, let me, but could you show by a show of hands how many people might want to come back up and get their three minutes? Okay, it's not much. All right. Okay. So, with that then, we'll take our vote. The motion is to open it back up. We have a motion by Commissioner Lucas, a second by Commissioner Stevens, so would all who are in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those oppose?
No.
All right. Do we have to take a roll call on that? Yeah, we do.
It was Commissioner Locke?
Uh, Commissioner Cardenas, who's, who was the no?
Commissioner Cardenas voted no?
Yeah.
All right. Then the motion carried six to one.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So, we will have the individuals, I think there were three of you, come back up, please, in three minutes each.
Good afternoon, Buddy Harwell, again. Thank you. Good afternoon, Bodie Harwell, again. Thank you. Yes, property rights. We've discussed this in the past and whatever. Lot of us moved out there for the ruralness, to get away from the grime and hustle and bustle of everything else. We, we lived with RP2 rezoning, supposed to be, you know, you clustered 4,000 square foot lots. We have barns bigger than the lots you're putting these houses on. We're supposed to have 30% open space so it looks rural. We're supposed to have 50 square feet per house for commercial. Commissioner has taken, has taken all that away. So now we have no commercial availability. This is in, during the moratorium, Kimberly Horn did a study about BOM and why, actually, the Wamama one was done by USF, but there is a study about the ruralness and everything else. This is a study that the county did back in 1920, or 2021. All right, do you feel this deficiencies in sewer system? 80%, yes. And I had to rate these here so you can see it in here. Water services, 81%, yes. The roads, determination, do you feel that there's a deficiency in roads compared to how the county has grown? 89%, yes. This is your own study. We don't follow it. We don't. Has the services generally been kept up with the levels of growth in Hillsborough County per the past decade? 65%, no. Do you believe sprawl is an issue? This is done by household income, 50%, all the way up to 77%. It is an issue. This is done by the tenure, 71% down to 53% by people, homeowners and renters. 72% of homeowners, 57% renters. Communities experience, do undeveloped land, do you believe that this is an issue for Hillsborough County? As far as widespread development, 66%, yes. Why would you move to a new community, prefer rural lifestyle? 45%. So yes, this is why we move out there. Like, and I agree, the farmers have property rights too. But we have a community plan that is disregarded time after time. We did the moratorium for three years through COVID and everything else, online, in person, can't hear anybody, can't understand them, you know, and we came away with a solution, I thought. There was lawsuits, and let's talk about, there was three lawsuits, two of them was won by the county. There's actually rulings, judge, judgment, saying that the county did have permission to dismiss one of the, two of the zonings out there. One was overturned, but that was out in the Boyette-Fishhawk area. And, and why isn't Fishhawk being considered?
Thank you, sir.
Is there too much money to fight?
Not too much time.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Brien?
First, first of all, thank you for taking, Mr. Joseph, I commend you for your actions, and I appreciate the rest of the board for taking the time to listen to us and try to understand our concerns. I don't have a lot of new information that I would like to present because I think I've presented time and time again on what my problem or concerns are with the growth and expansion within the exist, you know, from the existing urban service area to the, to the new. The, the problem I have with the expansion is before improvements can occur, I really want, would like the commission and Hillsborough County to focus on what can be done within the existing urban service area to improve the infrastructure and to improve conditions of life for all the residents. Have you been to BOM? I mean, have, have you been to Sun City? Have you been to Big Bend area? I don't know if any of you have ever been there, but it's a prime example of poor planning and a poor quality of life that's submitted upon the, the inhabitants of the area because there's nothing in place to support the inhabitants. And the expansion and growth continues and continues. So I ask you, again, to pause. I ask you, again, to focus, you know, on the existing urban expansion area. And I would say, please, go and do some studies and reviews and come, and determine compatibility requirements, determine consistency with the comprehensive plan, determine if these expansion plans are compatible with the, that it's ready for the expansion. Again, focus on the existing. And lastly, I have a, I mean, I knew it was a directive by Hillsborough County Commission to expand the urban service area. And as a, as a, as an inhabitant, as a, as a, an individual who's been involved in politics and been involved in these types of activities for, like I said, over 40 years, I really have a problem with that. It's appalling to me to tell someone to find a way to do something and make it happen. I mean, I was a, I was an executive in a, several power companies over the last 30, 40, 50 years, actually. And when I told people to do something, by God, they did it. And you know what? The planning commission does a good job, but they need to go back to the drawing board. They need to review and study and determine what needs to be done first before you allow the expansion to occur. Thank you for the, I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Corbett.
Kami Corbett with the Law Firm of Hillward and Henderson. I want to correct, or maybe change the perception of what the staff was asked to do and why. There was an update to the comprehensive plan. In that update to the comprehensive plan, they identified that the time has come to expand the urban service boundary. They asked staff to evaluate, based on all of the areas in the county, what would be an appropriate place to expand the urban service boundary. And I believe that this area was identified, not because it was rural, or this is exactly where the commissioners wanted it to go, but because it's already being served with urban services. It's already allowed to be developed at two units the acre. It makes it a lot easier to look at this area than it does, say, the I-4 corridor or the South Shore area. So this was the area that staff recommended, and the board acted on that recommendation. And you might be frustrated with the county's lack of response to the comments, but I still think the expansion is supportable. And if this body doesn't think that the entire area should be considered, perhaps provide some alternative directions as to how much should be studied. Because, again, your comprehensive plan has already been updated to acknowledge that an expansion needs to occur. And respectfully, this came about because there, there are not available developable lands for single-family residential development. They're certainly not in the city of Tampa. And Commissioner Kress, we're having a heck of a time getting townhomes approved in the city of Tampa, and even finding land big enough. So we are having challenges. There are needs. And I just wanted to add that additional background as to how these amendments came before you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else that I may have missed? I don't think so. All right. Good points, Ms. Corbett. I don't disagree with you that this is the area. My, my pivot is that our Board of County Commissioners and the, the agencies that are under them haven't shown me that they're competent enough to do what we've found in this area. So it's, it's not, I'm not saying that this won't eventually become it, or this isn't the right place for it. I'm saying, even from the way they started this process, why didn't their community planning and infrastructure department bring this forward? Why did they direct our staff to bring it forward? Community planning and infrastructure could have brought it forward. Our staff could have done an objective review, and then whoop-de-doo, we go forward. That's not the way they decided to do that, right? So to me, there, there's an issue there, you know what I mean? So that's, that's really my gripe in the whole thing. Sorry to get off on a tangent, but I guess I give staff three minutes to respond since we opened back up the public comment also. Ms. Orina, do you want to take it?
Sure, I'll, I'll take it. And actually, some other things I had jotted down, sort of maybe repetitive to what Ms. Corbett said. I wanted to, to point out that the goal of the comprehensive plan has been that 80% of new growth occurs within the urban service area. And that goal continued in the updated comprehensive plan. And to achieve that goal, we included a number of new strategies to focus on infill and redevelopment within the urban service area. So I don't want us to think that, like, we're only focused on outward growth. We're very focused on infill and redevelopment as well. We created new density bonuses for centers and connections, you know, that, which is more of a redevelopment strategy. We, but part of that is also strategic expansion. And that is because our data and analysis, as we look out at our population projections, found that within the shorter horizon, we would start to breach that 80% goal, even with some of these redevelopment strategies. And what that means is more of the growth that is projected to come to our community would start to go into the rural area. And that starts to change the character of our rural communities. We start to have more and more one-acre subdivisions. And that's not what I think any of us envision is the rural area necessarily, where we have active agriculture and equestrian communities and the things that our rural area community plans speak of. So strategic expansion is called for within the county's future, updated future land use section. When we looked at the, updated the future land use section and the request by the Board of County Commissioners, we did look at these two areas as being good candidates for expansion of the urban service area because they have these unique land use categories. They have for decades allowed for the potential for two units per acre if they were occurring under these planned village concepts that allowed for extension of water and sewer, and that allows for more of a semi-rural suburban kind of village concept. They were originally supposed to be these self-sustained villages when they were conceived in the 90s. That concept has changed over time through the different iterations that, that Mr. Harwell and others have participated with us in, in, as they've evolved over time. But they nevertheless have allowed for development out there. And a, a number of the, there are a lot of existing entitlements in the WVR2 and the RP2 areas, that they are not pure rural areas anymore. And that's part of what we looked at when we created the recommendations to the board that went last March. And that's why, you know, we recommended them as good candidates for expansion of the urban service area. The last thing I wanted to mention was, they asked about the Fishhawk area. The Fishhawk area is designated RP2, but it is inside the urban service area. And the board asked us to look at expanding the urban service area for the area that is RP2 outside the urban service area. So at some point, yes, we're going to have to come in and fix that Fishhawk has this antiquated land use category that doesn't fit, but it's inside the urban service area, and so it was not a subject of the board's initial direction. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And before I kick it back over, I'll just remind everyone that we are a recommending body. So I know there's a lot of talk about what we're going to do in our action tonight. Like, Board of County Commissioners has the final say. We can, we can say whatever we want here, and they can come back and do whatever they want. So, you know, let's keep things in perspective tonight. Commissioner Licas.
I have a question, maybe it's for staff. Sorry, I'm a little rusty at this process. I guess I'd like to kind of better understand, and I'm jumping in kind of midstream with some of this. What is the overall kind of way to assess, if, if these pieces are coming in piece by piece, and we're looking at Wamama, and eventually we'll look at I-4, is there an overall way to kind of think about how much overall might be accommodated, how much growth will be accommodated? Or because we're going piece by piece, are we kind of looking at it piece by piece? Is that making sense? Because I'm curious, overall, if we, what's the big picture goal, which will be accommodated when we look at all of the components? So Sean, do you want to address that?
Sean College Planning Commission Staff. We did look at, and our executive director mentioned, the goal of 80% of the growth being, in the future, being inside the urban service boundary. That was one measure that we did look at. Without this change, we are looking at over the next 20 years, about 72% being inside the urban service boundary, which is not meeting our 80% goal. We did do an analysis of if this, these two areas go through, where, where we would be 20 years from now, and we would be about 79%. So it gets us a lot of the way there, but not quite the way, the way there. And then beyond the 20-year horizon, we're going to see more pressure.
But that's just for the two areas, right? She was talking about as, as a whole, in some.
Yeah. So as we start to look at master planning for those, so let me start over. So for the Little Manatee South area and the I-4 corridor area, there is a separate set of policies in the plan called urban expansion areas. And that outlines sort of more a long-term master planning process, somewhat similar to what Plant City did with having a northeast master plan, where they laid out a master plan for how annexation would come in. It could lay out a phasing plan, an infrastructure plan, how all of that could occur over time. That is what we envision occurring for those two areas. And that could have different triggers. It could have different mechanisms that don't exist in the typical urban service area because it is under a different designation. Could have different land use categories. Could have a whole lot of things that are different about them. So there's a lot we, yeah, we're just at the start of it, so there's a lot we don't know yet. But I think that would give us some opportunity to look at what the overall potential is, and then what might be the appropriate phasing to bring that online with some of the, the population projections. We also do the overall county-wide projections every five years with the update of the long-range transportation plan, which is, we'll probably need to start that process in, what, two or three years now?
I believe so, about two years.
So, so that will give us an opportunity to also look at how Plant City's plan has been updated, and the city of Tampa's plan, which we're getting close to finalizing, and how some of those changes interplay with this. Because we also are looking at, you know, density bonuses in the city of Tampa, and how does that play into how much population they can accommodate as well.
And I guess I'll just comment that I'm asking because when I, I teach growth management and I teach urban planning, and the work that I'm really familiar with is, is what Portland does, where when they are going to expand their urban service area, they've already identified, like a reserve is what they call it. And this is where they will, they've identified this land, it's 20 years, 30 years out, where that additional population needs to be accommodated when they exceed the 80%. So I guess, so what troubles me is looking at this kind of piecemeal and taking little, little slices at a time, the overall vision for where this, this will go, it doesn't have a landing spot necessarily that's clear because you're taking it piece by piece, to me, as someone who's jumping through halfway through this process.
I mean, in a way, so interestingly, in the early 90s, at one point, all of this land, the RP2 and the WVR2, was all a part of the urban service area. And the state said, you've got way too much land in the urban service area, pull it back. They created these land use categories. It almost became that urban reserve to some degree. I mean, that's, it almost held it in abeyance for a long time, but it allowed the services, and it allowed a certain level of growth to occur. I, I hope that through these expansion areas that we're able to create in these other areas, that maybe we, we start to, to build out something like what you're talking about.
Yeah, because I guess hearing from the community, there's a little bit of exhaustion around the rethinking of their, their places. And something that allowed this not to be looking at, this is happening now, and something again might happen in two or three years, makes sense to incorporate as part of this process, to me. Something that gives the long, long-range vision.
And if the chair could give me 60 seconds?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Sir, Jay Conns, Planning Commission Staff, just to continue what Ms. Orina was saying, again, this is phase one. Phase two looks at Little Manatee South, it looks like at I-4. Today is a deadline that we have Today is a deadline that we have for that, for consulting services that we have. So we will be reviewing those proposals, and we will be able to bring that back to this board here in a couple of months, on what that scope in that contract will look like, and then provide updates in the coming months, as the consultant and Planning Commission staff and county staff actually work through just what Ms. Wernita was talking about, of an urban service expansion area, to actually look at those areas, do some sort of a preliminary planning, if you will, to have exactly that conversation with the folks that live out there. Again, this, in essence, backed into it, because this has been two units to the acre for, since the 1990s, right? The village concept, which basically did that, because these folks back here would tell you that if you showed up here in the 1980s or 1990s, south of the river, going down 301, there wasn't a lot going on, but these land uses were there to allow some of that, two units to the acre out there. And it's grown, and it's come out to that. So it does. The one last thing about the rural area, there are over 30,000 acres of R1 in the rural area. So if we don't have a policy, and we don't look at how to actually do just what we're doing now, we will have 30,000 residential ones on well and septic. And Chair Joseph, you talked about environmental, think about that, please, going forward, about the amount of well and septic that you can get in some places of unincorporated Hillsborough County, if we don't do what you're saying is adequately plan for it in the future. Whether this is for you the best path forward, but there's always another side to the coin that we always have to be looking out for, just to say that. Thank you, sir.
All right. Yeah, there, I see you fidgeting over here, Commissioner Lauk. You ready?
No, no, I'm not ready. It's a conundrum for me. For those of on the board, you know how I feel about USAs and urban growth rings. I think they're bad policy. I mean, you can look at jurisdictions all across the United States, ranging from Dallas, Chicago, Atlanta, Miami, they don't have urban service areas. We can achieve growth, smart growth, through traditional zoning, through traditional annexation, through traditional market-driven economics. When developers come in, we can find a better way to do this. So knowing how distasteful urban, this urban service area in general is to me, I'm weighing whether I'm going to advocate for this move, because it expands growth in our region, which we desperately need. If you see our home prices based on, relative to the amount of money the average person makes in the city, it's astronomically high. We need to be able to grow in order to accommodate the people that live here today, and the people that will live here tomorrow. Using the USA as a mechanism to do that, I'm not necessarily on board with, because it's bad policy. Using your examples, Portland, for example, they have one major economic force in that region, which is Nike. Very small, when you look at the number of employees that are there. Their average home cost is 59% higher than anywhere else in the United States. You look at a city like Seattle, who has tons of industry, tons of Microsoft, T-Mobile, lots of big corporations are there, and they are astronomically high relative to some of the, even the West Coast properties that are up and down there. So I'm very dubious when it comes to USAs in general. So I have a conundrum. I'm not necessarily wanting to vote for this, because I don't believe in the USA in general, but I recognize that we do need to find some room for growth in this city. I hear what you, I hear what the residents are saying, I hear that you're coming out. Bottom line is, the growth is needed, and I'm kind of with you. I don't, don't know what I'm going to do with this one.
All right, good points, Commissioner Lauk. Commissioner Cardenas.
Yeah, you know, part of my reasoning earlier for voting against opening it up is because we hadn't really talked about it. I feel like we're still kind of, we've still been going through this whole process with everybody talking through it. And, you know, as this came up, you know, the first thing I thought of was, you know, didn't we just do a moratorium in South County? That was the first thing that I thought of. And then usually, whenever something gets presented to us, and it comes as a direction through the county, usually it's that I find that we go back, we kick it back, and then they work on it some more, and then it comes back to us again. I mean, that's kind of generally how I've seen things kind of progress. My, my thought process immediately on this is that I probably will not vote for it, so.
All right. See, the two ladies moving, Commissioner Crass.
So it sounds like it would be easier to expand into the My Mama Balm area, but I don't know if we would have a room of people here if we were talking about the I-4 corridor. So in my mind, I may be taking a holistic approach that was mentioned. Are we doing what's easy, or are we doing what's, makes more sense? To me, I just don't know that we would have the same pushback if we were talking about a really, you know, an already highly developed area. So that, that doesn't jive well either.
I noticed that, too. I echo that sentiment. I was wondering, because when you started talking about the I-4 and the, the southern area was Little Manatee area, I was like, well, that's exactly what I was thinking we need. Like, why isn't that happening here? So that distinction kind of made it even more glaring to me, that that level of thought, effort, and detail wasn't put into this. And I get that, like, there's reasons why. You can find reasons it was already, you know, two, two per acre, and it's kind of sitting there, and it looks good, and it's, it's right there in our faces, and it's shiny. But, you know what I mean? You still have to put that, development is not a game of shiny objects. You have to put thought into this, because, for me at least, this is just my personal thing, people's lives, you know, or at the end of this thing, like the pastor spoke about, you just look at the schools, and they're going to go through all kinds of stuff if we do this. Like, schools are overcrowded, and they don't even know when they're going to have schools. You know, they got to add way more schools to their plans and stuff like that. So I, you know, I think there needs to be more thought in this area, like there was more thought in the other areas.
Well, I, I would just say, again, I mean, that these land use categories are unique compared to any other place in, in the rural area. They allow for, and have subdivisions in them that have extended water and sewer. They allow for two units per acre, which is not a typical, I mean, the, the rest of the rural area is typically one to five, or one to one unit per acre. And so they, they allow for something that is not rural. And so that makes them distinct from other areas of the, of the rural area. Do they have the planning for all of the infrastructure that is needed to accommodate four units per acre? No. Does, but, but the, the urban service area is a tool. It is a planning tool. It is a planning tool to begin the process. To do that planning, it doesn't happen overnight, and there is school concurrency and concurrency for water and sewer, that those, when somebody comes in for a development, they're not going to be able to build it if the schools aren't there, or if the water and sewer isn't there for them to hook into. You know, the, the, the county commission, with some of the recent privately initiated amendments, directed that the mobility fees from this area be collected and directed into improvements specific within these areas. Those are the types of creative solutions that I think are needed to, to try to, you know, we don't have transportation concurrency. But, but those types of solutions are the type of things that are needed to be brought to bear, to try to address the infrastructure needs that come along with, whether it's two units per acre, or four units per acre, whatever development occurs in this area, needs to be, those types of things need to happen. So, you know, I, but I absolutely think if we were talking about the I-4 corridor, people would be here in opposition.
Commissioner Bowden.
Okay. Where did I start? Well, many of you heard pretty much what the commissioners have said about different things, about why we're here, and, and what we do, and our recommendation. And, and nothing has been like, absolutely, we follow what the Board of County Commissioners says. We are not asked, coerced, paid to actually vote either way. We have voted against, we have voted against staff, we voted with them. We do listen to the residents of the community. I take conversation with people where we've been here till 11 o'clock at night, listening to people from the community in regards to what they felt, what they thought, and we've actually sided with the community. So I, I think that any time that any resident feels that, you know, we rubber stamp the county commissioners, what they say, you know, I would say shame on you, because we are all volunteers, we get paid nothing for doing this, and the hours that we spend. You know, we have to review this stuff prior to coming to these meetings. And then we sit, we listen to what the audience says, what the staff says, and then we make a decision. Now, if the Board of County Commissioners override that, then they have that power. But I think that to, to, what is, where I'm looking for? To challenge our integrity in regards to the way that we vote and what we do, once again, I say shame on you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowden. Yes, Commissioner Seaman.
Ms. Wernita, could you talk to us really quickly about who's responsible for the cost of the infrastructure improvements, whether it's the county or the developers, and how that's determined?
Typically, the county requires the developer to bring things like the water and sewer to their site. They require impact fees for their cost of their impact on a host of services. I will probably forget one, but there's a park's impact fee, water sewer, the mobility There, they are required to make site access safety improvements. I'm sure I'm forgetting other infrastructure pieces that they are required to make, but they're required to make everything within their site, and then like the access to their site safe. And then they pay impact fees for their impact to the broader system, if that describes it.
Okay, so just so I understand, the county is therefore responsible for taking the utilities down these respective roadways? Or are the developers responsible for that portion of it, to get the utilities from their current location to the site?
I believe that they require the developer to bring it if they want it brought sooner than the county has it there. Yeah.
All right, Commissioner Lauk, and then I'll come to you.
I would say it's not just about the last mile. However, when the developer comes in and brings the conduits and all the electrical and the water that comes in, it's about the plants that service, whether it's power or the water. So it's, it's not just the development fees that go into bringing the roads and the asphalt and the sidewalks. Power and water, they have, that has to draw, draw from somewhere. And that's one of the reasons we have the USA in the first place in the county, because the city can't keep up, because the county can't keep up, excuse me. Not a good reason to have one, but that's really the genesis of it.
I'm, sorry, can I?
Go ahead.
I'm wondering if those power draws, or those power issues, for example, are those covered by impact fees? Are they covered by utility fees that developers have to pay? And then, because I believe what Ms. Wernita said, that's in addition to bringing the utilities to the site.
The fees are in addition to bringing the utilities to the site. I think if, Jay, you got something to add here?
I was just going to say, Jay Khan's Playing Commission staff, ma'am, are you talking about TICO in that sense, or are you talking about utility fee?
But I was talking about all of it, honestly, not TICO specifically.
So, so, power is a totally different thing, and that is between, franchise between the, the government, the developer who's, who's building in there, and then when it's a, a subdivision, it'll be, you know, with a CDD and everything else, to actually build all of that out. The utility, as Ms. Wernita and others have already said, is that the county will lay it out to say, in five years or 10 years, we plan on running a line down this road. You already have entitlements, and you want to build next month, then you're going to need to bring the line down, pay for the whole thing to come, and then you receive credit back when other people along that line actually hook into it and pay back. So there's, there's a variety of different ways to where you can either wait, or you can go ahead and go forward with it. Same thing can be also said with transportation, that you can actually move forward, and you can pay for an improvement outside of what the county actually says you have to pay for, and then be paid back for some of that as well. So there's a variety of mechanisms that the county has to get infrastructure for the developer in place sooner, if the developer and the county want to pay for it. The last thing I will say is that when you do have large subdivisions, a lot of the times, fire stations, schools, libraries, parks, are looking for sites, and they're doing a development agreement between the county and that developer to get site selection within that. You see that all the time with elementary schools. If Commissioner Wharton was here today, she would be able to, you know, tell you a lot more about that. Does that help with some of that?
Yeah, I mean, I was asking about the defraying of cost for, you know, as far as taxes are concerned, and county dollars are concerned in terms of what the developer is going to provide versus what the county needs to provide.
So there are impact fees, specifically, you will do a math, math of what those impact fees are. And that is the bundle of dollars that the developer is responsible to pay for their impacts that they have. Then the development agreements might say things such as, the school site or something must be provided on, onsite for CO, certificate of occupancy, prior to moving forward with it, right? These are all things that happen, but again, they happen specifically on a site-by-site basis, right?
Sorry, I'll be done after this, but have any, has there any, has any research been done after the fact, after these developers pay impact fees for these sort of improvements for the county, to say whether or not the fees paid in these areas are sufficient, or have been sufficient, to cover the, the impacts?
That's, that's a great question, and it's certainly one that the county has worked on long and hard, and they are moving, I believe. Is it the county administrator looks at it, is it every three years to five years now, I believe?
I think so. They do, they have, with the most recent update of the mobility fees, they require that the mobility fees be updated on a, on a regular interval, and, and it's supposed to be updated this year. And when they update it, they do a study based on like 2025 numbers to say that it should be set to cover the cost. But that, you know, gets out of date.
Right. So I, I know that that was, we had an increase, right? Like, an incremental increase over the years. But I think, from what I remember, that was set up years and years ago. So I guess I'm just wondering if, if the county has done the research to know if we have actually sufficiently covered the costs of the impacts.
Yeah.
Sean, College Planning, Planning Commission staff. I don't really have much more to add than what Ms. Wernita just said, that a few years ago, there was a comprehensive study on the impact fees and where they were with regard to what they were assessing versus the actual cost. At that time, most of them, if not all of them, were significantly increased, and some up to 100% of the cost, which was a very significant increase at the time. And some of them built in an indexing going forward, but I'm not completely familiar with that.
You're going to love this. Can we send any sort of recommendation to Hillsborough County staff? Or, I don't know if we can do it to Planning Commission staff, to take a look at whether those impacts have been sufficiently covered by the amounts charged in the last few years?
You absolutely could make a second, a separate motion. I think it would be most appropriate to go to the county administration, or county commission, or both, to, to suggest that that be looked at, and make sure that they're, they're kept up to date to address those impacts. Yeah.
All right. You done now? Yeah. All right. Commissioner Cardenas.
You know, I was just, I was actually just going to say, I mean, at the end of the day, CDD feels, CDD fees go back into taxes, and they go back to the. CDD feels, CDD fees go back into taxes and go back to the constituent at the end of the day, don't they? I mean, when somebody's paying their property taxes, their CDD fees are in there. So ultimately, they're paying for the infrastructure that the developer.
All right, good point. Commissioner Cardenas, we're gonna bring it over here, calm down. We'll come back to you. Let it simmer for a little while over here. Commissioner Linkus.
I, I can't help but put on my hat as someone who studies farmland and rural land preservation. And Baum is, is to me one of the most, best respected places in Florida for that and just really so valued for the rural and agricultural community. And I guess that's, I think that's why I'm, and urban service areas are absolutely the number one way to preserve rural lands. The only places that have successfully toed the line in fast-growing places like Florida have urban service areas, Alachua County, Marion County. So I really believe in them. I really believe that you have to stick to them and follow the, that it, it is the job of the folks who kind of manage the plan, the elected officials and the Planning Commission, to really take them seriously. But I also, I, I really do think that there are serious concerns here that are raised around kind of the two units per acre and the extension of the services. And, and maybe Chair Joseph, this might get at your concerns here, but I guess I'm, I'm looking for a little more data around sort of where are the ag lands? Where's the, the community sounds like they're looking for a little more data around just how much, where different kind of scenarios might play out and how it would impact them. And I, and I know this area could, is very likely to be flood-prone in certain places. I, I feel like there just needs to be a little more, I, I may be looking for a scenario kind of where there's some options, but it just looks like the community's got a lot of concerns that I don't really fully see the impacts to the ag community being addressed here. And there's a lot of new policy coming down from the state of Florida around rural lands. Maybe where I'm landing on this is maybe there's another process where a little more scenario or study could happen, where we table this decision and look at some of the different pieces as they come together and maybe find a way to look across things like agricultural impacts in general. I do think that I for community would come out because there's also some of the most important ag land in this area there as well. So maybe there needs to be looking across, beyond the urban service area, where are our valuable soils? Where, where, where's it, where do we really need to address the environmental impacts because we've got some funky zoning and we really do need to address that? But I, I just don't see enough of that data to, to make a really informed decision. And I do believe that urban service areas are one of the best tools that we have as planners and that we do need to kind of look at this very carefully, I guess.
All right. That's interesting, protecting the rural land. I never thought about urban service areas like that, so that's interesting to me. But I didn't want to say, you guys had your turn, we're doing ours now. I don't, I did want to say that I don't think we should table this. I wouldn't be in support of that because our duty here is to take some action to give the Board of County Commissioners some direction for them to make the final decision. So I would not, it's been brought up, I've heard that term thrown out there twice, maybe people don't understand what they're saying procedurally, but I do, and I would not be in support of that. I think either way we go, we have to take some sort of action tonight.
Thank you for that clarification. And maybe that's where, maybe I'm going towards a way to kind of look across, is there a tool we could look at that might look across the whole body of decisions around the urban service area collectively? Or I, I think maybe the piece that you kind of brought up, Ms. Ornita, around, is it Manatee South that has a process for really thinking around the infrastructure and really thinking around the way that the expansion would occur in tandem with infrastructure in a more planned way? If there's another opportunity to kind of go beyond just the, the land use change and really think about the planning?
If I may, I, I would suggest action be taken tonight because the board's hearing on this is advertised and scheduled for March 13th. So I think they would benefit from having a, a recommendation from you all. That recommendation could be accompanied with a, a letter, for example, I mean, that said, certainly if your recommendation was not favorable, that, that perhaps explained like you think this area would benefit from being considered as an urban expansion area and having a more detailed planning study that is accompanied by that infrastructure planning and, and, and other components that are outlined in that policy that, or something different. But I think that is an option that's available to you.
All right. Commissioner Lauk?
I think the bottom line is when we weigh all of the economic drivers, when you weigh the affordability of housing, the scarcity of housing that we have, I think the county commission did the right thing in asking staff to evaluate whether or not we can expand the boundary. Staff looked at it, came back and said it makes sense to do it in these areas. And at the end of the day, despite my severe reservations about the USAs, I think that's probably, the USA itself is probably some of the reason we have some of the underdevelopment from an infrastructure standpoint provided by the county to the residents there today because that USA exists. Despite my reservations with the USA, I'm, I'm gonna be in favor of this.
All right. Any other comments? I see being quiet down there, Mr. Berry, nothing to say? Okay. All right. Are there any other comments or questions from the commissioners? If not, then I may go ahead and close the public comment, going once, going twice, and I will close the public comment on this item and open it up to motions from the commissioners on this item. We're gonna do first CPA 24-44, the text amendment. Anyone? Commissioner Lauk?
Looks like this might get shot down, but let's give it a whirl. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that we approve HC CPA 24-44 and find it consistent with the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan and forward it onto the governing body.
All right. We have a motion of consistency finding by Commissioner Lauk. Is there a second out there? All right, we have a second by Commissioner Seaman and a motion by Commissioner Lauk for consistency finding. Are there any questions or comments from the staff before, should we just go straight to roll call? Because it, it seems like it's not gonna be yet. I'll go ahead and ask the clerk to do a roll call vote.
Bowden?
No.
Cardenas?
No.
Kress?
No.
Linkus?
No.
Lauk?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Joseph?
No.
All right, motion failed three to four. Commissioners Bowden, Cardenas, Kress, Linkus, and Joseph voted no.
Two to five.
Sorry, two to five.
All right. Do we need to make another, yeah, we need to make another motion because that one failed. You wanna make it?
I'll suggest a motion, and I, again, I'm a little rusty at some of this, so correct me if I need to amend something here, but.
Yeah.
I was just gonna remind the board.
Yeah, I was gonna wait till she made it in the, yeah. She might have them, she's pretty sharp now, don't, don't count her out.
I was gonna say that I don't, I can't get my computer to load the plant policy, so I do need to kind of be.
I'm sorry, I need to be helped along with this. The motion that I would like to make is that, that to, to deny this and to, to include with this a letter suggesting that the urban expansion area approach be studied that would accommodate additional study of the infrastructure, of environmental impacts, and agricultural And I would be, because I can't seem to get this to load, I've been looking for some language in the, in the future land use element that I'm sure is there that talks about the importance of preserving agricultural land. And I, I can work a little harder to get at that, but I do believe that the sort of separation of rural and urban uses, there's language on that, perhaps language around preserving farmland and agricultural areas and providing adequate infrastructure services is probably where I'm going.
Okay, while, while I look for the policy language, Tracy, should the motion be two separate motions?
Yes, I would recommend that you have that as two separate motions.
Okay.
It would first be to deny.
Find it consistent or inconsistent, in this case inconsistent with the staff recommendation.
Thank you for reeducating me, I'll get back in the swing of things. Okay, then I'm gonna make a motion that this be found inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. And do, then do I need to find those exact policies now?
Yeah, we're gonna, yeah, she's working on it.
What I believe Melissa's looking for are the policies that would support a finding of inconsistency.
And I'd like to offer policy 1.1.9 and to get away, to find the criteria for five, six, and seven not met, because that's, in my review, that's clearly what I've found is, you know, my reasoning for, if there are any other policies to go along with that in there, which there are, I'm sure there's a ton of them.
And I apologize that my technology is not cooperating with me, so I'm having trouble pulling it up.
Well, I was gonna say also, goal six is balance with natural resources. I'm gonna, I'm gonna read to you goal six. Seek balance between the preservation of natural systems and the built environment while simultaneously being prepared for adverse natural events. Provide an environment where people naturally interact with each other and their community, including streets, parks, and other public facilities. It then goes on to give an objective that talks about environmental considerations, and it then furthers on for clustering for conservation of natural resources. I'm going through objective 6.2, policy 6.2.1, objective 6.3, and policy 6.3.2. Those are all from goal six, balance with the natural resources.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. That's exactly the, the kind of information I knew was in the plan and that fits what I'm looking for. Thank you.
Commissioner Lauk?
As part of the motion, can we get clarity on what you're, with all the, with all that, I'm a little lost on what your letter, what your proposal in your letter would say.
We're not to the letter yet.
That's a separate motion, I understand.
Separate motion, got it.
Well, did we grab those?
Yeah, I got those written down.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we have a motion of inconsistency finding by Commissioner Linkus citing, you wanna rattle those off?
Sure. 1.1.9, goal six, objective 6.2, policy 6.2.1, objective 6.3, and policy 6.3.2.
Okay, all right. And a second to that motion by Commissioner Kress. You got that? So we're voting on the inconsistency of 2444, the text amendment. That's it for, for right now. So everybody got that before I turn it over to the clerk for a roll call? All right, clerk, please.
Bowden?
Yes.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Kress?
Yes.
Linkus?
Yes.
Lauk?
No.
Seaman?
No.
Joseph?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried five to two. Commissioners Lauk and Seaman voted no.
All right, we're gonna open it up now for 24-45. Motion, oh, yep, Mr. Robin?
I think you had a commissioner who wanted to make a motion before you started the next one.
I apologize, yeah, please, Ms. Linkus.
I, I do apologize again that I'm a little rusty on sort of the rules of order, and if, if the conversation is appropriate at this moment, I was compelled by the suggestion by Ms. Ornita around looking at this area for additional study, and it sounded like there was an existing tool called an urban expansion area policy. So the thrust of my kind of recommendation is that we, we look at this, that we provide a letter that would investigate this area as, as an opportunity for an urban expansion area study with a particular focus on looking at sort of rural and agricultural lands preservation and infrastructure and environmental impacts, especially of the pros and cons of expanding infrastructure or not.
All right, is there a second to that motion out there?
A second to motion.
All right, we got a.
Can we, can we add an element within the letter asking for a study of whether or not the urban service area is, is needed?
It would be up to Commissioner Linkus.
With respect to the comprehensive plans part of that study?
She'd like to.
Unfortunately, I would not include that in that one, as I do think that the urban service area is imperative here.
All right. All right, so we have a motion to create this letter as described by Commissioner Linkus. You got all that right? Okay, it's coming on fast tonight. And a second to that motion by Commissioner Bowden to send this letter, or is everybody clear we're voting on here right now to send a letter to the BLCC as described by Commissioner Linkus? A motion and a second. All right, then I'll ask the clerk to do a roll call vote. Sign them.
Bowden?
Yes.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Kress?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Kress?
Yes.
Linkus?
Yes.
Lauk?
No.
Seaman?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried six to one. Commissioner Lauk voted no.
All right. Okay, so now we are moving on to 2445. Yeah, Commissioner Seaman.
Can I do my motion that I had talked about, or do I, should I wait till the end for that, about the letter? For the impact mobility fees? Okay, sorry. All right. I'd like to make a motion to recommend that the county administrator causes to be reviewed the impact and utility fees collected over the last five years or so in the urban service area in order to determine if those fees collected have adequately covered the expenses the county has incurred for those purposes during that time. I can, I can send this to you.
Commissioner Seaman, is that intended to include impact fees?
Yes. Thank you.
A motion to send a letter to the county administrator concerning all that stuff that Melissa Ornita just wrote down. If anybody needed clarification.
I go back and read the closed captioning, don't worry, I get it.
Commissioner Kress?
Just a clarifying question, were you only asking about utilities or were you also looking at, you know, mobility?
I would say all fees, yeah. Utility, mobility, and impact fees, all fees collected.
Yeah, thank you. Then I will second.
All right, we have a motion for a letter by Commissioner Seaman, second to that motion by Commissioner Kress. Does anybody need any clarification before we take our vote on this? I'm not seeing anybody moving. I'll ask the clerk to go ahead and do a roll call.
Bowden?
Yes.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Kress?
Yes.
Linkus?
Yes.
Lauk?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, back to our item of business, I hope, 24-45. All right, so I'm gonna open this one up to the commissioners for motions on this one. This is the map amendment that goes along with the text amendment we just voted on, so. Is there a motion out there from the commissioners? Oop, yes, Commissioner Bowden.
If you find it inconsistent, am I to use the same policies?
I believe so. I mean, it's up to us. Yeah, there.
Yes, well, I don't know that the policy 1.1.9 about expanding the urban service area would apply. And my suggestion would also be to potentially utilize, if you're, I'm assuming you're finding it inconsistent, the policy related to the rural area.
Jay's up there, what do you got to say, Mr. Collins?
I'm sorry, Ms. Ornita, please.
Oh, because if it's staying in the rural area, that policy, objective 1.2, and then one, policy 1.2.1 and 1.2.2 would be relevant, I'm just writing down what I just said, about the rural area, because it would be staying in the rural area based on your prior recommendation.
Yeah, and Ms. Ornita, staff will continue, the, the, the goal six that we had for the other one would also be applicable. And there is also, if this commission should feel so, feel for it, the community context under goal three compatibility, objective 3.1, as well as policy 3.1.3. Again, since you are saying no to a USA expansion, then residential four would not be compatible with rural context.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Collins and Ms. Ornita. So lots of stuff to work with there. All right.
other one would also be applicable. And there is also, if this commission should feel so for, feel for it, the community context under Goal Three compatibility, Objective 3.1, as well as Policy 3.1.3. Again, since you are saying no to a USA expansion, then residential four would not be compatible with rural context.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Collins and Ms. Ornita. So lots of stuff to work with there. Commissioner Bowden.
I'll make a motion that we find, I don't have the thing up.
24 CPA, 45, 24.
Forty-five, inconsistent based on Policy 1.2, 1.2.1, 1.2.2, Goal Six, what's it, Policy 3.1, 3.3.
All right.
And I'll second.
All right, we have a motion of inconsistency finding by Commissioner Bowden. A second to that citing the policies Ms. Ornita just copied down there and that she just stated. Second to that motion by Commissioner Linkus. Any clarifications or questions before I have the clerk go ahead and do a roll call on this one? I'm not seeing any, so would you please go ahead and do the roll call vote?
Bowden?
Yes.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Kress?
Yes.
Linkus?
Yes.
Lauk?
No.
Seben?
No.
Joseph?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried five to two. Commissioners Lauk and Seben voted no.
All right, thank you very much. And we still have two more to go. And don't all you be shocked if the Board of County Commissioners ignores all this and just does what they want anyway. So, with all this work we've put in tonight. But our next items on the agenda are HCCPA 24-46 and HCCPA 24-47. And the presenter is Sophia Garantiva.
Good evening again, Commissioners. Sophia Garantiva, Planning Commission staff, here presenting on the text and map amendments associated with the board-directed expansion of the Baum and Riverview areas. Again, starting with HCCPA 2446. Again, this is a publicly-initiated text amendment proposing the expansion of the urban service area by approximately 7,948 acres. This acreage is exclusive of any privately-initiated amendments. And then similar to the Wyomama text amendment, some small adjustments to this acreage have been identified and will be presented to the B O C C in March. Again, adjustments are to include acreage of parcels that were cut out during the GIS mapping process. The proposed boundary line, again, is accurately depicted, as you'll see in the following slides. This aerial shows the expansion area generally associated with HCCPA 2446 shaded in red, and the red dash line shows the proposed boundary, again, which is accurate. Again, the same departments and agencies as the previous amendments reviewed and proposed, and provided comments, Conservation and Environmental Land Management and Environmental Protection Commission, Hillsborough County School District, and Affordable Housing, also Transportation Planning Organization, which provided a regional modeling analysis as part of their comments, public utilities, including water resources, as well as community infrastructure planning, fire rescue, agribusiness, and development services. No objections were received. And also, as, as the Wyomama amendments, this amendment was reviewed using the newly adopted future land use section. With that, the proposed amendment is consistent with the following objectives and policies of the comprehensive plan, specifically future land use policies relating to concentrating growth in the urban service area, policies for expanding the urban service area boundary, also goals and strategies in the Riverview and Baum Community Plans, and South Shore Area Wide Systems Plan related to encouraging housing opportunities, pursuing economic development opportunities, and managing and protecting environmental resources. As such, Planning Commission staff recommends that the proposed text amendment, HCCPA 2446, be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. I will then go ahead and continue to the companion map amendment, HCCPA 2447. And this is a publicly-initiated map amendment accompanying the text amendment to expand the urban service area boundary and consists of approximately 10,151 acres. Again, this area would be going from residential plan two and agricultural rural one to five to various future land uses, including residential four, residential two, agricultural rural one to five, public quasi-public, and natural preservation. This amendment is generally located in southeast Hillsborough County, east of US Highway 301, west of County Road 39, south of Lithia Pinecrest, and north of State Road 674. It lies in the rural area and is within the Baum and Riverview Community Plans, as well as the South Shore Area Wide Systems Plan. Lands part of HCCPA 2447 are generally shown in the yellow shading. They have mostly the RP2 future land use with a small portion of AR1 to 5. Black dotted line shows the area that is part of the amendment. The areas that are not shaded are part of the private amendments or part of the areas associated with the WVR2 expansion. And again, about 100 acres of AR1 to 5 is included in this request as this acreage accounts for parcels that have a split land use between RP2 and AR1 to 5. So the following map shows the adopted future land use in the area. Residential plan two, again, shown in light yellow, AR1 to 5 is shown in light green. And you could see the area specifically that is AR1 to 5 right here. And this map shows the proposed future land use, uses of residential four, residential two, AR1 to 5, public quasi-public, and natural preservation. Much of the land, approximately 7,656 acres, is proposed res four. Approximately 130 acres is proposed res two. And again, this area is located north of Lithia Pinecrest, and is proposed res two to reflect the surrounding lower-density development pattern. Approximately 383 acres are proposed AR1 to 5 to accommodate parcels with split future land uses. These lands are owned by South Florida Water Management District and Planning Commission staff coordinated with South Florida Water Management District on the appropriate designation. And these are the lands right here. Approximately 1,848 acres is proposed natural preservation with our, which again are county-owned lands in the ELAP program, and lands that are part of Little Manatee River State Park. And it would be this area down here, Little Manatee River State Park. Approximately 13 acres are proposed public quasi-public to accommodate the proposed one-water facility in South County. And if you could see it, it is this right here, this area in blue. Again, the AR1 to 5 natural preservation and the public quasi-public lands are proposed to stay outside of the urban service boundary. This also shows in black hatching, again, the privately-initiated amendments. These lands are not included with these applications. Again, if approved, the proposed amendment would increase the residential density potential, would also reduce the overall non-residential development potential, but allow for more flexibility and location of allowed commercial uses, including removing the RP2 community commercial use limitations. It would also support environmental conservation efforts specifically for county-owned properties in the ELAP program. And a more detailed impact breakdown is available in the agenda packets. And these are just some photos of the subject properties and the surrounding areas. So this is County Road 672, east of Baum River, Baum Riverview Road, which is proposed residential four. This is Baum, Wyomama Road looking north, proposed residential four on both sides. Specifically to the right is a privately-initiated amendment. Baum Boyette Road is looking north, this Baum Boyette Road looking north towards Hawkstone, proposed residential four on both sides. And this is Thompson Road looking north. This is within the small area that's proposed to be residential two. Again, the same departments and agencies that reviewed and commented on the proposed map amendment, commented on the proposed map amendment as they did on the text. And they had similar comments, again, except for TPO. The modeling analysis was only included as part of the text amendment, and no objections were received. And just wanted to note that we, we as staff use the newly-adopted future land use section as a form of review for this consistency finding. And again, the proposed amendment is consistent with the following objectives and policies of the comprehensive plan, specifically the future land use policies relating to concentrating growth in the urban service area, balancing character, compatibility, and location of land uses, and the purpose and intent of the planned villages. Also, the goals and strategies in the Baum and Riverview Community Plan, Plans, and the South Shore Area Wide Systems Plan related to encouraging housing opportunities and economic development opportunities, as well as the future land use policy, policies managing, to manage and protect the environmental resources. As such, Planning Commission staff recommends that the proposed map amendment, HCCPA 2446, be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. And this concludes my presentation. Staff is available for any questions.
Thank you. All right. Should I do separate, just go ahead and do separate public comments on this one, or should I try and join them up again, Tracy? What would be, you don't even know at this point.
Well, based on what happened to previous planned moments, I think maybe you should consider having two separate sets.
Yeah, okay. All right, so we'll start with the public comment for 24-46. Let me see who signed up for this one here. Virtually, we have Mark McLaughlin. Sorry if I'm butchering that. Mark M., is he on the line?
Hello, Mr. Chair. Mark did not sign in.
Okay, that's, oh, we had on the line, it looks like, yeah, all right. So we will go to in-person. And in-person, we have Raquel Gavara, Gilara? Nope, no response. All right. I'll go back to Buddy Harwell.
Good evening, Buddy Harwell, again. Baum Civics Association. I just want you to do my previous statements, to just consider those, that for this amendment also. Also, there was something that was said, Mr. Collins, and no disrespect to him, but about the septic tanks, about the one-acre lots out there, you know, do you want it, one-acre lots with septic takes? But time after time, when we come down here, we always hear property rights. It's the, what we have now, that's our property rights now. So if you forced expansion, you taking away property rights, and then you're gonna make someone hook up to the sewer system? Just something I wanted to bring up. Also, about the, the lawsuit, because this board, the, the, the one above that, that's Jay, part of Planning, no, your Planning Commission, Development Services, Z H M, on two rezonings out there, 1,800 acres, 1,400 acres, all considered was consistent. It went to the commission. The commission voted against it. The developers sued. The judge upheld the commission, the board's decision, stating that it is not time. It is not consistent with the current area in the way. And actually quoted several of us at the, at the meetings. And the other one is in Baum Community Plan, we have what we call Dark Skies Initiative to, for light pollution. And it is an area. I have friends and family that come out to, to watch the stars, or the rockets, and the stuff. And when you stand out there, you look north, all you see is fish hawk glowing. You know, so, so that's something that we don't want to become. And we picked this rural lifestyle. We picked not having cable TV out there. We picked not having internet, or phone services don't work. We chose all that. There was, in, in, in the agriculture, I believe helping the farmer as much as we can, because they deserve, because we're losing, there's actually a YouTube video called Losing Ground. Go watch it. All the agriculture land, and we're gonna be dependent on China pretty soon. We got TDRs already in place. So transfer development rights, so they can sell their, their density and move it to inside the urban service area. Redevelopment, like I say, Gibsonton, Palm River, Ruskin, Wyomama, the places that won't, Dover, except on the Energy Park area. And there was a thing about the ups, the sewer lines, you know, the development that runs the sewer line out, then anybody can hook up to it. Isn't that considered-
That's your time, sir.
Upsizing?
Thank you. All right, next up, Jay Franklin.
Nothing's changed. Just what I said before, folks. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Bill O'Brien. Oh, Bill O'Brien, yeah. Go ahead, sorry.
Bill O'Brien, again. Thank you for the time and the opportunity to speak, and thank you for a reasonably good decision you made previously. A couple of things I forgot to mention earlier is I, you know, I've, I've been a citizen, I've lived in this area for 70 years. I represented the area through the Civic Association as the president for numerous, on numerous occasions, as even the mayor of Baum, which, by the way, I'm like you guys, we didn't make much money as being the mayor of Baum. But a couple of things I wanted to bring out about this, and I think it's important, and I know I had all this. A key flu objective, identify new residential growth opportunities aligned with infrastructure service through the planning for an establishment of the urban service areas. Policy 1.3.3, establishment of urban service areas will include amendments to the capital improvement program, privately-funded infrastructure and, and/or other mechanisms, ensuring adequate public facilities and services are at or above adopted level of service standards. Flu compatibility, Objective 3.1, thank you, Jay, for bringing it up. I didn't have time to speak about it earlier in the previous request, but 3.1, new developments should recognize the existing community and be designed in a way that is compatible with the established character of the surrounding neighborhood. Urban expansion is not compatible with rural environment in Baum, Wyomama area right now. It's not ready. Neighbor, any crease in, any density increase shall be, this is Policy 3.1.3, any increase in density shall be compatible with existing proposed or planned surrounding development. Compatibility, and then it goes on to define that. I'll let you guys do that on your own. Neighborhood and community development, Objective 4.4, neighborhood protection, enhance and preserve existing neighborhoods and communities. Expanding the urban service area to this region is not enhancing or preserving the existing community and neighborhood in rural southeast Hillsborough County. Fix what you got already. Develop new plans, good plans to move forward into the expansion areas needed, and then I'm for expansion. Let's do it. But let's do it right.
Thank you.
Thank you, and have a wonderful evening.
All right, Ms. Corbett.
Kami Corbett, again, with the Law Firm of Hill, Warden, Henderson. I just want to say that every time since I've been here in 2007, and the urban service boundary has come up, the same exact arguments have been advanced every single time. Rural is not compatible with urban. We need to study. We need to do infrastructure. Every, in fact, the last time it was objectively studied by ULI in 2017, they said this urban service area needs to expand in five years. That would be 2022. We're now in 2025. So at some point, a decision needs to be made. And in fact, the Board of County Commissioners is faced with consequences from the state if they don't update their comprehensive plan. Some of those consequences mean getting your population numbers from the state of Florida and having to use them and update your plan accordingly. Another one of those consequences is not being able to make publicly-initiated plan amendments, such as community plans, or updates to community plans. So there are real consequences to not plan now. They didn't used to be in place. They are now in place. And just one thing that I want to add about the mobility fees and impact fees, we do pay connection fees plus impact fees. We do pay expansion fees. There is extensive reliance on development for infrastructure in Hillsborough County. It's always been that way. And in fact, one of the things that this commission is trying to do is reintroduce that element, it, back into the ability to expand roads and infrastructure. Back in 2016 and 17, that was taken away, and we didn't have the ability as developers. We had to rely on the county to spend their tax, spend tax dollars, and they just haven't done it. So we look at this as an opportunity for a public-private partnership. The private development community absolutely knows that we're gonna have to step up to the table and participate, be a participant in these infrastructure expansions. We absolutely know that. We're expecting it. And that, that's the only way this is really going to work, and it would, the only way it really will be orderly. And the last thing I want to say is the ag community was very behind this request. That is one of the reasons the commissioners feel strongly about it, is because the Farm Bureau is asking for this. And unfortunately, that constituency isn't here with us this evening, but if they were, they would tell you that they are- they would tell you that they are in support of these amendments.
Thank you. Good comments. All right. Ms. Elvis Appleton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and the board. Just a couple of concerns. First of all, Mr. Lauk, thank you for your concern for the housing costs, because that is important to us as residents out there in our area. What we are seeing is the housing costs are increasing astronomically. The average, when you drive around and see the newer communities being built right in our area, in Wy Mama, and also in the Baum Riverview area, you're seeing that they're from the low to mid $300,000 as a starting price. And then you're seeing them getting up to $400,000, $500,000, even $600,000 if you just drive around in our area. So I think the affordability of housing is becoming a major problem in the rural community, and I think that needs to be addressed and needs to be thought about. Also, when you think about renting an apartment, and I work with a lot of young adults who are looking to be independent, and they say about Hillsborough County, it is too expensive to live here. And that includes our area as well. As a matter of fact, the average cost, if you start off at a one-bedroom in our area, is $1,600, and it gets up to about $4,000 in our area. That is not affordable for someone who is trying to become independent as a young adult in our community with the cost of living and the wages that they're making. So I, I hope that gets addressed sooner than later. Also, when we look at the proposed change, we're talking about an additional 10,876 housing units. And if you take a look at that and you say about 2.54 people will live in each housing unit, we're talking about a population growth in that area of 27,2625 individuals. If we take a look at that housing unit increase times two vehicles per unit, we're looking at 21,752 new vehicles that are in the area. There is no way our area can sustain that without the infrastructure being addressed pretty quickly before we allow that to happen. Now, again, as a pastor, I want those people out there. There are more people to reach and love and serve, but we need to do it smart. We need to have a comprehensive plan that will sustain that type of growth. And if we could get the cost down and allow the area to remain affordable for people to live in, unfortunately, I'm concerned about our current residents. They're just going to get pushed out because the tax base is increasing, the values of our homes are increasing as they continue to drive the prices out there, and so people cannot afford to stay in our area. So those are some concerns that I would ask the board to consider. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. I think that was all we had sign up for 24-46. Miss anyone who's in here? Nope. All right. I'll turn it back over to staff for a response. Three minutes.
So I would just say that the conversations that we just heard were very similar to the conversations that we heard in the First Amendment. Staff stands by their comments from the First Amendments. However, if anyone on the Planning Commission has any questions specifically for staff based off of the public comment, we are available. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Seaborn.
All right. I just wanted to thank Kami for her comments. I think they were really well thought out and really applicable to this situation. I also did want to address the comment that it's too expensive to live in Tampa. It's true. It is too expensive to live here. Unfortunately, the only way we combat that is more development, and I hate that that's the case, because, you know, we, everybody knows that we have too much traffic, but, you know, macroeconomics and supply and demand tells us that with more development comes cheaper prices. So I just wanted to comment on that. I also have a question for staff. Someone made a comment saying that these existing residents may be forced to hook up to sewer system if this passes. Is that accurate?
So, Sophia Garantiva, Planning Commission staff. So they're not required to hook up unless they wanted to change their property? This is if it were, again, the urban service area were expanded. So, again, they're not required to hook up unless they were, again, to take advantage of being in the urban service area and then having the extra density and intensity. Something like that would have happened through a rezoning process.
So if they were to sell their property, I mean, I guess, so a sale, as is, wouldn't impact the requirement to upgrade, but if they were to subdivide their property and sell a por, what, I guess that's, that's my next question. If they were to subdivide their property and sell a portion of it, would they then be required to upgrade?
Yes, then that would trigger the requirements to then hook up to water and sewer. If it were anything above, for example, as we were discussing, if it was in the residential four area, it would be anything more than four units to an acre, or, excuse me, anything at four units to the acre.
Can you explain that a little bit further? So if there's any subdivision of their land, they'd be required to hook up, or only if they're in the residential four category?
I believe any subdivision of their, their land would require them to, to hook up.
Is that something that was studied pretty intensely, or?
The, the way that it occurs in the existing urban service area is that the, the rules were changed a couple of years ago, that if you split your lot, you now have to, you're now required to connect. You can no longer, it used to be, this was, it changed three or four years ago, that you used to be able to do a lot split and continue to stay on septic tanks, and that was changed in the land development code to, that you, you could not, no longer do that. You had to connect at that point.
So this is a county requirement or a planning commission requirement?
It's a county requirement in the land development code for connections. There, there are, I believe, feasibility requirements that the county looks at as to whether or not that's feasible. Probably is best to, I wish somebody from Utilities, we thought they were going to be here tonight, was here, because they could address how that's applied.
Sure.
But typically, if they leave their property as it is, they will not be required to hook up. That we can say for certain.
So, just so I'm clear, if somebody has 10 acres or 20 acres, if they want to sell off any portion of that land to someone else, if we expand the urban service area to these properties, those people will also be included in not being able to separate out their land unless they upgrade to sewer system?
Potentially, if, they would potentially have to start connecting to water and sewer. If that, again, as I said, there's a, I believe, a feasibility threshold that, in the code, but that's something Utilities would be to opine on.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Lauk.
Follow-up question, interesting line of questioning, Commissioner. What if we're replacing a septic tank? Are they, is a permit able to be procured in order to do that, or are they required to hook up?
I believe that they're allowed to continue their existing septic tanks. But again, I'm not the, the expert on this, but there's, there's nothing that triggers them having to convert and requires them to connect to the central water and sewer until they start subdividing their land.
Okay, thank you. To follow up, two of the compelling things that I heard from, from the public in that last session, it's expensive to live here. I have an adult daughter, she's a professional, she's a nurse in Tampa General Hospital, and it's very difficult for her to afford anything. And the, the votes tonight do not help folks who cannot afford housing. What we're doing is we're doubling down on the housing crisis that's developing in Hillsborough County by denying these things. And the second thing I would add is, for those who are maybe voting against this because of traffic concerns, or folks in cars, or the commute that's going to be involved to get back into the core areas, I would point to cities like Atlanta or Dallas, where you have big business districts, professional districts outside of the core area where you don't necessarily need to drive in order to go to work. So we may not necessarily see all the cars we're hearing about on these roads back into the city over time, as community centers develop and jobs develop in these areas.
Thank you, Commissioner Lauk. For my part, I just want to be clear that I am extremely pro-development. The way I got here was through development. I believe that this area could and probably will develop in the future. I want it done properly. The county is not demonstrating that they have the capacity, not money, mental capacity to do this in a process that's correct. So I just want to be clear. I think staff did a great job in finding these areas and spotlighting these areas. This report is very thorough. In fact, it's so thorough that it made me realize that the rest of the county isn't keeping up with that. Okay, so that's my problem here. It's not that I don't like development, or I think development's the demon, or I think we need to stop developing everywhere. I'm super pro-development. When private ones came in, I, I voted for them without a problem. But to me, when you're a municipality, you should show a certain level of professionalism and, you know, common sense, and I'm not seeing it here. So that's, that was my only problem with that, and I just want to put that out there. So Commissioner Linkus.
I, I just wanted to offer also that I appreciated Ms. Corbett's comments, and that I, I'm looking at page one on, on either of the, of the staff reports, and there is discussion about sort of what this expansion area kind of opportunity could mean, and it talks about the opportunity for new future land use categories and policy approaches. And I think that that's, but the whole idea is that there is a plan to guide the development and to have the thoughtfulness around some of sort of the, the land uses and the infrastructure and how it comes together, maybe phased, instead of such a broad stroke approach. And I think that could absolutely accommodate more affordable housing, some different kinds of options that would accommodate a diversity of concerns. But I think that the concern is, how is the infrastructure going to match up here? And will we be able to have a quality of life? So I, I think this approach, it just allows more opportunity for involvement, it allows more thoughtfulness around sort of the different pieces that have to go into consideration for such a large area.
Thank you, Commissioner Linkus. Commissioner Lauk.
This strikes me as a chicken or an egg scenario. I mean, this has been studied since 2017, if, if you believe Ms. Corbett. There's a study in hand saying this is needed, these are the things that will happen when we approve the urban service area. Things get triggered within the government entity that are going to enable us to successfully develop these areas. Not easily done unless you have an urban service area expansion.
Good points, Commissioner Lauk. Any other commissioners have any other points? No? Then should I go back to the public comment, or should I try and take a vote? Because they were shown in tandem, so we kind of have to go back to the public comment again, don't we? For the next 24-47, this was, we've been talking about 24-46, basically. Okay.
Excuse me, I think you can go ahead and vote on the first plan amendment. You've taken public comment on and move on to the second.
Okay, all right. All right, then, are there any more comments on this one, 24-46, the text amendment? One's going twice. I'm not seeing any, so I'll close the public comment and open it up to motions from the commissioners on this one, 24-46, the text amendment.
I tried to write down all the policies before, and I didn't get them all, but I, I'm making a motion that, to find this inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. I do believe it's goal six, 3.1, those are the, I've got 1.19, I'm not sure if that one still was in the mix here. 1.2, or is that, that's for the second one, I think, sorry, 1.2, 1.21, and 1.22 are for the map. So it'd be goal six, goal 3.1, and 1.19. Inconsistent with these.
Sure.
Good, okay. All right, so I have a motion of inconsistency finding by Commissioner Linkus, citing those policies, objectives, and goals that Ms. Renita wrote down there. We're looking for a second if one exists out there anywhere. Commissioner Kress, second. All right, we have a second to that motion of inconsistency finding by Commissioner Kress. Motion of inconsistency finding by Commissioner Linkus, second to that motion by Commissioner Kress. Are there any clarifications, questions, comments from the commissioners before I force the clerk to make this roll call vote? Please, go ahead.
Bowden?
Yes.
Herdennis?
Yes.
Kress?
Yes.
Linkus?
Yes.
Lauk?
No.
Seaborn?
No.
Joseph?
Yes.
All right, motion carried five to two. Commissioners Lauk and Seaborn voted no.
All right. So we will go back now to the public comment from the public on 24-47. And we will start with, let me check to see if there's anybody online.
Commissioner Joseph, could I ask a question?
Yeah.
I don't know if this would be the appropriate moment to also, if we wanted to have the letter, a motion for a letter, that this also be included for an urban expansion area study, or could we couple that? I, I think we need that, a similar motion.
I was just going to ask whether or not you wanted a letter.
I would like to propose that motion.
Calm down, I'll come to you. I get, I got it. Judge Tracy.
Does that link to both of these plan amendments that are being heard together?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking for the same kind of level of, of study around.
If it does, I would suggest you wait until after, until the decision on the second one, and see if that changes your motion at all.
All right. All right, so, back to the public comment from the public on this one. We will go to, we don't have anyone virtually for this one, so I will start off with Gregory Morris.
Thank you, commissioners. My name's Gregory Morris. I'm a son of Gregory over here, a third-generation Floridian, and I represent the Lorax contingent here tonight. I have a question that I want to start us out with. Why do people move to Florida? Why do people love to live here? Out in the lobby, there's a room called the Sea Turtle Room, there's the Manatee Room, there's a water tower from Plant City with a strawberry on there representing agriculture. So this is a way of life that we love here in Florida, especially in Hillsborough County. Or is it endless urban sprawl? Is that what we, what we want to see in this county and the state? Well, my parents are here with me, along with their neighbors. They own a part of the little triangle of land at the very top of the map that you just saw. That land raised me. That land taught me to love this state. That rural land is helping raise my four kids right now. We treasure it. And the signs that went up at the end of their street last month were, a longtime nightmare come true. And I know it's the nightmare of everyone who owns rural land in this county right now because of the pace and the scope of development. Everyone I talk to, I'm sure it's true for most in this room as well, say and know that we're developing Florida too fast for our roads, too fast for our infrastructure, too fast for our environment, which I particularly treasure, too fast to have any meaningful rural or ag land left within a generation. I see the names of the new developments and their cruel ironies. Panther Trace, Grand Preserve, Wilderness Lake. Not anymore, guys! Not anymore, or ever! They're gone forever! These representatives of rural Hillsborough are here right now, tonight, because their way of life is being fundamentally transformed and pushed out forever, and it will never come back, almost now to the eastern boundary of the county. I see it every day. Yet it sounds like everything that, for Hillsborough, it sounds like everything's a foregone conclusion. Like there are no real brakes on this car. Like we don't know where we stop. Like the end goal is a county consisting only of urban sprawl, like Palm Beach County. It would break my heart to see Hillsborough become like that. And frankly, I don't know why people would want to live here in the first place if the Florida that I learned to love, the Florida on that wall and celebrated back in the lobby, is no longer found in this county, because it was poisoned, or paved, or completely destroyed for, you know, somebody's idea of, of adequate and ideal development. And that's a question that needs to be asked by someone at some point. Where are the brakes? Where does this stop? I realize you guys don't have the power, but I hope you'll adequately inform those who do, that we need to think about these questions. We can't just keep going on without any brakes. Future generations are going to regret it if we don't. That generation is my kids, and I want them to have a Hillsborough County worth living in. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Next up, Tammy Morris.
Hello, thanks for listening to us tonight. I live on Thompson Road, at the end of Thompson Road. We are at the end of a dead end. I'm not really sure why they picked us. We're almost half of that little triangle, our little subdivision, which was 52 acres, which was started in 1997 and has 10 plots. We have a private road, which is owned by all of us, so although we are zoned one house per acre, we are not allowed to do one house per acre, only the 10 original houses because of the private road. We are rural. We are a buffer between fish hawk trails and the conservation land behind us, and I don't really understand why we were picked. Thompson and Bryant Road have both been left alone, they're not changing anything. I don't know how they would access this piece of property. It makes no sense, unless Fish Hawk Trails wants our property. They're not planning on bringing the sewer or the water down Bryant or Thompson. It is just not a good choice. This is a sanctuary, this is a farm. We have a farm, we have horses, we have cows, we have chickens. We have 12 acres total. It's just, it just doesn't make any sense for them to have picked out this little triangle and added it to this whole thing. and added it to this whole thing. I mean, I'm sorry about the whole thing, and I know it's growing. My husband works 12 miles from work, and it takes him an hour sometimes to get there because of the craziness. We moved out there before Fishhawk Boulevard was even Fishhawk Boulevard. And I realize all this is going to happen. But it's not right for them to come over and take away our little sanctuary that the county can't even find it sometimes. We're at the end of a dead end road. We are on a dirt road. Why did they pick us? There's a 40-acre parcel, there's our 52-acre parcel, which we can't even go AS1 with really right now. And we keep the dirt road because we don't want to go one house per acre. We certainly don't want to go denser than that. It just doesn't make any sense. Something needs to be left alone. Where are the animals going to go? I mean, I realize that it has to be developed, but please consider taking that little triangle off because it just, it's not appropriate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, all right. Next up, we have Greg Morris.
I concede my time.
All right. All right, thank you, sir. All right, next up, Cami Corbett. Nope, all right, everybody's had enough. Zelfis Aplin up next.
Again, thank you, Mr. Chair, and to the board. Thank you for your hard work and diligence in allowing us to have a voice to be heard today. Oftentimes, our residents feel like would.
Oh, hang on a second. The timer's off, it's already.
Man, I talk fast.
Yeah, there you go, all right.
Thank you, Chair. I love Hillsborough County. I came from the state of Texas. I did enjoy the reference to Dallas. That's where I did grow up. I grew up in Fort Worth, Texas, in a community called Keller. And it was very rural. I went to country, to a country high school, and there were cows right across the street from my high school. I enjoyed seeing those cows every single day. Now, when I go back home to Fort Worth, it is overly developed in Keller. As a matter of fact, the fields that we used to drive through to get to the high school, which was a 20-minute drive, you saw nothing but pastures and farmlands. That's all developed with houses and businesses there. And what's happening in the state of Texas is the population has increased so rapidly that now the school districts are going broke. And they're trying to find funding. They're firing teachers left and right. They're talking about closing schools. And this is just kind of the ripple effect that they didn't have long-range planning to kind of see this coming. They didn't have a crystal ball or anything of that nature to identify this kind of problem. And I would hate to see our education system get overly taxed by not planning ahead and trying to solve some of these problems and making sure that we're growing at a rate that is conducive for us to sustain it for generations to come. And so now, my son lives in the Keller community, and it makes me sad what's happening to the school district because now his daughter is going to one of those schools next year. And so I just get concerned about what I see. Again, I just want us to slow down, really consider it, do some research and study, see what's going on around the nation, and see how that could apply to us. Because as we're talking about these service areas, they are very reminiscent of where I grew up and where I came. And my wife laughs at me and says, everywhere we move, we bring the growth with us. I'm sorry, my fellow community members. I love growth, but I do, I do want to see it happen smartly. And then to Commissioner Bowden, my heart does break that you were forced to make that comment tonight. I do want to apologize on behalf of any of our residents in our community that make you feel like this commission is a rubber stamp. You guys are more than just that. You do care about our communities and the places that we live and our residents, and we appreciate the hard work you do. So please accept our apology on behalf of our community. I know I didn't say it, but I love our community, so I would want to give you that apology and to this, rest of this board. We love you guys and thank you for the job that you do.
Thank you, sir. All right, next up, we have Buddy Harwell.
Good evening again. I thought it was going to be short, but you left me back there too idle. In all the town hall meetings I go to, Commissioner Myers, I always talk to Chief, former Chief Jones. There's always 25 fire stations behind. The Sheriff Department hardly says anything, but talking to deputies, they need 1,500 or so. You know? And we're building these subdivisions so small, on small lots, they can't park their cars, and it's always a safety aspect as far as them getting in safely to some of these developments. You know, even, you comment, they couldn't come up with the numbers for how many fire stations they need, you know? I once was told that five out of four people have problems with fractions, and I believe that. I'm all for jobs. We don't need houses. We need jobs for the residents that are here so they don't have to travel 50, 60, 70 miles. You get us some jobs in South Hillsborough County, I'll be standing on the street corner with signs waving it, spinning it, doing whatever I have to. We had jobs out in Baum in the RP2, but like I say, commissioners taken away. We were ecstatic for having jobs. I've even, you know, during the moratoriums, I was even trying to get the storage facilities because there's no room in the backyards for a garage or a shed for people to store stuff. So that's why you see all these storage units. The storage units should be required in each development so you can capture trips. The schools, that's something that somebody brought up about the impact fees and stuff like that. Just a ballpark, 1,000 houses in the community, and they're figuring on 340 students. There again, a fraction problem. Water. Yes, we're spending money on infrastructure, on the new pipeline, Tampa Bay, you know, 2028 supposed to be here for this and that. Can any one of y'all guarantee we're going to have water for the residents that's already here? Nonetheless, the residents that are coming, we should have a 30% at least capacity reserve in place. We lost power. This hurricane was a slap in our face. Can you imagine if it hit Tampa Bay? Don't California, Hillsborough County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, all right. Next up, we have Jay Franklin.
Mr. Harwell said.
Okay, all right. And last but not least, Bill O'Brien.
Last but not least. Boy, I like that. Okay, I'm not going to have a lot to say on this round. I appreciate the responsible actions of this commission staff. I am positive, I never implied any of you were rubber stamping anything, and I commend you for, again, your actions this evening. Couple of things I will bring out relative to the 24, whatever it is here we're talking about. This one. There was a thing back in 2000, prior to 2008, there was a thing called concurrency. And concurrency required that every county in the state of Florida have a comprehensive plan and land development code. And within those confines of those codes and plans, they had to have concurrency. And it included, they must have, before they approved development, they must allow, they must have transportation infrastructure in place. They must have schools, they must have public services, they must have, you know, all the services and all. But back in 2008, the state legislature repealed part of that concurrency requirement. And what they did is they removed transportation. Because what was happening, I think it was just transportation, and either Melissa or Jay can straighten me out on this, but they, the bottom line is, transportation used to be part of the concurrency requirement, and now it's not. And I understand why they did it. They did it in an attempt to improve the economy. If any of you who had a house back then, I had property and real estate, and it was pretty much worthless. You couldn't give it away, just about, back then. So they were trying to incentivize growth and all within Hillsborough County. My point is, it's an excuse for Hillsborough County. It's an excuse for every county in the state of Florida. Thus, since 2008, it's been an excuse for them to surpass competent decisions, to surpass or overlook quality decisions relative to what the needs are and what the infrastructure should be prior to allowing expansion of urban service areas and development to occur. I beg you to make good, you know, continue to make good decisions and overlook and try to find a way to surpass or overlook the requirement that the state says. You cannot look at transportation as a requirement to, you know, to approve or disapprove a development. It must be part of the decision process. It must be, and it's not. And thank you for your time, and have a great evening.
Thank you, sir, all right. I'll turn it back over to staff for responses.
Jay Collins, Planning Commission staff. Pretty much heard some of the same conversations. There was one conversation, it was raised for Thompson. I've been doing this for 20 years. I've been on Thompson twice. So where Thompson is, is there correct? The Morris family talked about. It backs up to Fishhawk. It is residential plan two. It's about 140 acres up there that is residential plan two. It is in the rural area today. The Board of County Commissioners instructed staff to look at changing all residential plan two within the rural area. So basically, it got caught up in a net, right? Right. So we then looked at that, and we looked at what was around it. And that's why we have a residential two on it, not a residential four. They probably would say either leave us alone or go even lower. One of the reasons that we don't want to go any lower is would that be considered a taking? Because again, residential plan two allows for two units to the acre if you go down to residential one or anything else. So just a little bit of context, because they brought it up. It is a different area. Second time I've ever been out there in 20 years. So it's a little nook in Hillsborough County.
Thank you, all right. To the commissioners for discussions, questions. Commissioner Seaman's ready to go.
Okay, just a couple of things. I appreciate the Lorax contingent, and I think you, I thank you guys for your input on that. I also wanted to quickly address the California comment. I said this before while sitting up here, but I encourage anyone who's concerned about becoming California to look at the anti-development policies, which led to San Francisco and Los Angeles becoming what they are today. Just might interest you. I also have concerns, my major concerns are about this sewer requirement. And I just, you know, thinking through some of that, you know, if, so say a family has 50 acres of land, and that's, you know, where their wealth is tied, and they want to sell off some of their land in order to pay their bills, for example. Having to convert 50 acres' worth of land to a sewer system is going to be really expensive for that family and definitely cost prohibitive. And so, in my mind, that would lead to that family needing to move out of the county in order to maybe afford their bills in that scenario because I can't imagine a situation in which they're going to be able to afford to upgrade to a sewer system on 50 acres. So my suggestion is, because I'm just full of these, I guess, is to make a recommendation to the county to reconsider the subdivision of land and sewer upgrade requirement in the urban service area. And I would be more likely to be in support of expanding the urban service area more if we didn't have this kind of requirement.
Can I respond to that?
Yeah, go ahead.
So.
And I know that it's an existing requirement. I know this is not new.
Right, my suggestion would be to set, as a separate motion from the consistency finding, to send a letter to the board asking them to maybe evaluate whether, or, yeah, reevaluate that provision, particularly as it relates to these new areas coming into the urban service area. I think that, that it's a little bit, this area is very different than, say, something like. I think part of the reason why they made the change was they are very actively doing like a septic-to-sewer plan in Palm River or in Gibsonton, and they're trying to maximize those investments they're making there. This is a very different context from that. And so I think that, yes, they may want to reevaluate that policy. They probably haven't thought about that. That exists in the land development code and would be something very appropriate for them. Some prompting for them to relook at. So that's great.
All right, Commissioner Cardenas.
Yeah, just thinking about the septic versus water, versus, septic and well thing. Just a thought, I mean, I've come across so many situations where it's not properly regulated. Some of these septic systems are leaking. I mean, it's an environmental, it's a big environmental issue. We have septic systems on the river that are leaking into the river, and they're not properly being, you know, taken care of. I can't imagine what's scattered throughout the county in all of these different spots. So, you know, while, while we, you know, there is, you know, individual property rights, you know, not all of those individuals take the responsibility the way that they're supposed to. And, you know, the city and the county step in and are doing these sort of things, and it's for a reason, to try to help keep things clean. So just a thought.
Comments, Commissioner Cardenas, Commissioner Bowden.
Isn't there some type of exception for Keystone in regards to?
Well, so Keystone is in the rural area, so they are generally on well and septic tanks. And the county did just amend their plan to allow for some additional areas where central water and sewer can be extended into the rural area. We did that about a year ago. But, but the, this is sort of the converse of that where within the urban service area, again, it used to be that you could do one lot split in a second with a variance in the urban service area and stay on septic tanks. And that, that was removed a couple of years ago. But it may be appropriate, as suggested, to relook at that given this area's transitioning from rural to urban.
All right. Commissioner Kress.
Yeah, to echo Commissioner Cardenas, I live in the city of Tampa on the Hillsborough River, and I have well and septic. And I would like very much to not have it, but it's super expensive to change it. So not, not within my budget. But what I want to say less eloquently, I think, is I kind of feel like, you know, we come to these public hearings and we hear we don't want more development because it's going to be more traffic. Not that we overly heard that tonight, but we hear it's a theme. So part of me just feels like if we're going to do density, let's do density. If we're doing four units per acre, we're just like setting ourselves up for more mess. So I just feel like if we're going to, if we're going to have more growth, let's, let's have it as dense as possible. Maybe not here, but in other places to absorb all of these new people who want to move here.
All right, good comments. Commissioner Kress, yes, Commissioner Seaman.
I just want to echo what Commissioner Kress said. I agree. More density in the urban locations where it makes sense will reduce traffic every single time.
Good thoughts, all good thoughts and comments. Are there any other comments from the commissioners? Not seeing any, then going once, going twice. I'm going to close the public comment and open it up to motions on this one. We're at 24-47, Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment. Any takers out there? Commissioner Linkus, welcome aboard.
I will make a motion to find this inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. Goal three, goal six, and 1.2, 1.21, 1.22.
All right. Motion of inconsistency finding by Commissioner Linkus. Is there a second anywhere out there?
Second.
Commissioner Kress seconds that inconsistency motion?
May I just clarify? I think, was it objective 3.1, maybe? Okay, thank you.
Right. All right, so we have a motion of inconsistency finding and a second to that motion by Commissioner Kress. Are there any questions or clarifications needed by any of the commissioners? Not seeing any, then will the clerk go ahead and do a roll call vote?
Bowden?
Yes.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Kress?
Yes.
Linkus?
Yes.
Lauk?
No.
Seaman?
No.
Joseph?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried five to two. Commissioners Lauk and Seaman voted no.
All right, thank you very much. And now we have some letter requests. Yes, Commissioner Seaman.
Sorry, I'll be quick. I move to request that we send, make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners and send them a letter requesting that we reevaluate the subdivision of land and sewer upgrade requirements as they apply to the expansion of the urban service area.
Very good, all right. Is there a second to that motion out there anywhere? Commissioner Bowden? All right, we have a motion and a second for a letter to the Board of County Commissioners as described by Commissioner Seaman. Any questions from the commissioners before we? Any questions from the commissioners before we vote? Ask the clerk to go ahead and do a roll call vote on this one.
Bowden?
Yes.
Cardenas?
No.
Kreis?
No.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Kreis, can you speak at the microphone?
No.
Thank you. Linkus?
No.
Lauk?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Great. Motion carried four to three. Commissioners Cardenas, Kreis, and Linkus voted no.
All right. And I believe you have another letter, possibly?
Yeah.
Commissioner Linkus?
I would like to make a motion that we create a letter to the board proposing that this be an area for urban, for an urban expansion area study that would look at issues like preserving rural and agricultural lands, infrastructure provision, and I think there was another piece on there, and environmental impacts.
All right. Is there a second out there?
Can I add a request? Specifically to Tracy, since he often drafts these things, that any correspondence that we have with the county commission also includes the votes? The, by, the, how many of the votes these pass by?
Oh, okay.
Without specific names, like to pass seven to two, five to two, whatever that vote outcome was. I think that's important to add context.
Is that a part of the same motion?
Yeah. Will you want to make a second? Why don't you make that a second motion after we...
On all letters passed tonight?
Can you do that retroactively? Go back and ask for us to? And then we'll vote on whether or not we think we should add the votes to the letters?
So we're going to do this as two motions?
Right. We're going to do Commissioner Linkus's first on whether or not we write the letter, and then Commissioner Lauk is going to make a motion that we amend with the letters we send the votes.
Chester, Chesterton would be proud of how many words we've used to craft this tonight.
All right. So Commissioner Linkus's letter motion is still to the floor. Do we have a second anywhere out there?
Second.
All right. We have a second by Commissioner Kreis. Are there any questions or comments before I have the clerk do a roll call vote on whether or not we send this letter? Not seeing any. Please go ahead.
Bowden?
Yes.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Kreis?
Yes.
Linkus?
Yes.
Lauk?
No.
Seaman?
No.
Joseph?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried five to two. Commissioners Lauk and Seaman voted no.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Lauk, I believe you have a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I make a motion on all letters voted to correspond with the county commissioners that we add a rider to it outlining the vote totals for each letter.
Is there a second out there to that motion?
That was poorly crafted. Commissioner Cardenas gave me the look of what in the world are you talking about?
Yeah, well, it should, should it just be to the county commissioners? Because we're sending letters to other places besides county commission, aren't we? For example, hers was to...
There was one to county administration.
So it's just letters crafted in general. Should we do it beyond just tonight, even though I think yours is just in general? I mean, I think that's a good thing overall.
So all the letters from tonight should include how you, the votes on...
I haven't had coffee since 10:30 today. I'm a little inarticulate this late in the game. The gist of it is, any letters that we send out tonight, I would ask that we just include the vote tallies with them.
Okay.
Right?
Got it.
You got it?
Yeah. I just think it should be any general letters in general.
Going forward?
I mean, yeah, moving forward. I think that's a great...
Is that a motion to amend his motion? Are you asking, would he accept that?
Maybe he'll amend it.
Accepted.
Okay. So...[1689.06]